Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'd like to call this study meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. Got a number of items on the agenda this evening. Our first item is, of course, calling the roll. So Ms. Christensen, if you could please call the roll of the council.
Thank you. Councilmember Beloga, I think he's still having some troubles getting on.
Yep, I think we're having technical difficulties at the Beloga household.
Mayor Bossy?
Present.
Councilmember Carter?
Here.
Councilmember Coulter? Councilmember Lohman?
Here.
Councilmember Martin?
Present.
And Councilmember Nelson?
Here.
So we have six into seven members of the Bloomington City Council. And as I said, I believe Councilmember Beloga is doing his best to get on. He's running into some technical difficulties, but he'll get here just as soon as possible. And we will get underway with our first item of the evening, item 2.1, which is a COVID-19 organizational and public health update. Beginning the meeting as we have since March with an update from Dr. Nick Kelly on the latest on the COVID-19 pandemic in the city of Bloomington. Dr. Kelly, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. As of this afternoon, there are 918 confirmed cases of COVID-19 in Bloomington. We've lost 41 of our neighbors to this disease and 89 have been hospitalized. We're still continuing to see that strong trend and this disproportionately impacting our BIPOC community with over half of the cases occurring in our Black Indigenous and people of colors communities. Reminder that while there's over half the cases, this community represents less than 28% of our population. This pandemic continues to cast a spotlight on the inequities we see in housing, employment, poverty, and chronic disease as a result of structural racism. And our data reflects that reality here in Bloomington. Public health has and will continue to work to address those issues of structural racism and the health impacts of COVID-19 with the rest of our city colleagues. As this pandemic continues, each week brings a new challenge. It's hard to not pay attention to what is going on around the country and the world. The last few weeks have been very concerning. We must remain focused on learning to live with COVID-19. This does not mean COVID-19 is over. It is far from over. This virus will continue to find a way to infect us until we find a way to beat it. We also have to deal with the realities of challenging messaging. There are going to be things that we don't know today that we wish we knew. The public health messaging on masking is a good example of this. Unfortunately, it won't be the last. This will be a dynamic situation for a while. Things will change and we will adapt. Our ability to live with COVID-19 depends upon our ability to manage the risks associated with it at a population level. We need to become very comfortable with being six feet apart from those that are outside of our immediate family. This is the most important thing we can be doing at our community level to protect our community. We need to focus on limiting our time in crowded places, confined and enclosed spaces, and those where we're having prolonged close contact, like those conversations. We need to limit those activities as best we can while we're managing COVID-19. Everyone should be using a face covering as a source control in indoor environments open to the public and staying home when they're feeling unwell. This is part of the multi-layered level of public health actions we can take to manage the risk of COVID-19 here in Bloomington. At work and at home, we're starting to plan more for the fall. This is on the minds of many of us as we think about school and the decisions coming in the coming days by the governor. It's important to keep in mind that the governor's decision is in part based on all of our actions. Opening schools requires that community spread be manageable and that public health has the capacity to investigate outbreaks and stop them. As a parent of three children, the son of a teacher, and a public health professional, I realize we can't have a one-size-fits-all approach to school. I know many parents are worried about sending their kids to school this fall and teachers are also feeling anxious. I think the guidance the state of Minnesota has put out and the work our school district is doing is going to help us manage that risk well. COVID-19 is changing many things, but it doesn't have to change how our community responds. Our physical distance doesn't have to mean social isolation. We're going to get through this together. Our community is full of kind and helpful neighbors.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Council any questions of Dr. Kelly this evening? Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Dr. Kelly, as always, for providing such a great overview of everything that's going on. And so I wanted to touch on the point that you made around the data and the fact that over half of the cases that we're seeing now in Bloomington are among our BIPOC community. And like you said, you know, a lot of the inequities that we see now that are so stark are a result of, you know, long, historic pervasive systemic racism in our country and across issues, right? Housing, education, healthcare, transportation. And so, you know, I think we've all probably seen that, you know, there are, there are agencies that are now declaring racism a public health crisis. So Hennepin County did a couple of weeks ago, the House of Representatives did today. And, and then there are a lot of healthcare organizations and public health organizations that are, they're voicing their support and their call for these declarations to be made. And so I want to raise that issue with my colleagues here on council and have that discussion. You know, is that something that we want to do in Bloomington? Are there, you know, resources and support benefits that if we were to make a declaration, you know, it would show our commitment to our community, but also provide more support to those who are being most disproportionately impacted, not just right now with, by COVID, but by these historic and pervasive inequities that we see in our country? And so I don't really expect a response from you, Dr. Kelly, but I do want to ask that we have that conversation in the policy and issue update.
Duly noted, Councilmember Carter. And if I could ask Councilmember Carter, um, so you said the House of Representatives passed it today. You mentioned Hennepin County and Minneapolis. By declaring racism a public health emergency, what does that mean? What does that mean in terms of actions, resources? What are, what are the outcomes? What are the, what are the action steps that come from that?
Yeah, so I actually really like Hennepin County's resolution. And, you know, so obviously they have all their, their whereas statements that are really powerful and speak to the data that we see over and over again, you know, across issue areas that, you know, where people of color, the BIPOC community members are most disproportionately impacted. But a lot of the, the actions that are listed in the resolution are really related to, you know, using data to make decisions and setting goals to determine outcome, to then determine outcomes that we want to see. There is, there are points around like resource allocation. One of the ones that I particularly like is developing consistent methodology for data collection, reporting, and analysis related to race and ethnicity, which I think in some ways we do as a city and we do well, but in some ways we don't with, you know, if you look at our public safety and our police department, we don't collect the data that we really need to be able to look for opportunities there. And so I'm happy to share that, the resolution that was passed by Hennepin County, and I think that that would be a great starting place for us to look.
Thank you, Councilmember Carter. We'll bring that up in the council policy and issues update. I'm 2.7. Additional questions for Dr. Kelly? Seeing none, Dr. Kelly, thank you much. I do want to remind folks, Dr. Kelly mentioned the wearing of masks. And a reminder to everyone, we do have, do have a declaration here in Bloomington, a proclamation asking, not requiring, but asking very strongly for people to wear masks when they're in public places and requiring the use of masks whenever you're in a city facility. So if you come to City Hall or the, the farmer's market, or if you go to the Bloomington Ice Garden, masks are required at that time. Next Monday night at our council meeting, we will be taking up the issue of a citywide mask mandate as an ordinance. Some folks have emailed me asking why we just don't do it. We, by the time the, the sentiment and the thoughts of public health professionals started to turn a little bit toward requiring mask mandates, by the time it did, we had let our public health emergency or our public emergency expire here in the city of Bloomington. And we're following now the governor's health emergency, the statewide health emergency, and again, the recommendations of the CDC and the Department of Health. So we can't just unilaterally, I can't declare a mask mandate because we are no longer under a, an emergency declaration here in the city of Bloomington. We do have to do it officially through a, an ordinance and by the vote of the council. So for folks who have been asking me that question, that, that's the reason why we aren't acting more expeditiously. Agree with you 100%. The, the need is there and the urgency is there, but we are required to follow the rules of a procedure and the rules of how long it takes to actually do a reading and the posting of a proposed ordinance and then ultimately a, a council vote on it. So council, any additional questions? If not, we will thank Dr. Kelly and say good evening. Very good, and we can move on to item 2.2, which is our Fire Department Services Assessment Report. Now, for folks who, who are not aware of this, for the past couple of years here in the city of Bloomington, we've been taking in-depth looks at all of the different departments across the city, looking at them, kind of taking them apart and putting them back together, looking at them from an organizational standpoint, from a budget standpoint, from an operations standpoint, just how, whether or not they're, they're working best and if not, how could they work better? We've done it over the past couple of years on, let's see, the Department of Health and, help me here, Mr. Verugui.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. We've had service assessments or strategic planning for information technology. Public health was human services. We rebranded it as Community Outreach and Engagement after the outcome of that assessment. Last month, you heard the report on our fleet study. We looked at our print shop and we have one in process right now for dispatch. We also had one in process for motor vehicle that's been upended a little bit because of our current circumstances. So they're, they're rather big undertakings and we've done them as a combination either outside consultant or internal review. We've used both approaches. This one was approved last year and I'm going to hand it over to Chief Seal and have him introduce Stuart Gary, who is our consultant, and talk about the scope of the, of the assessment.
Thank you much. Chief Seal, good evening, welcome. Thank you for being here. Looking forward to this presentation. Please take it away.
Mayor, council members, as you recall, and as Manager Verugui alluded to, last year we had the actual scope of services that was brought to the council during a study meeting, which the council approved. And this is the result of, of the scope of services that we put out for RFP and Citygate with the successful respondent to our RFP. The principal for Citygate is Stuart Gary and he is your presenter this evening. And I'm going to let Stuart talk to you about his background a little bit, but he has got a wide range of experience, including fire chief, city manager, as well as consultant. So he has spent a considerable amount of time with the fire department and analyzed a lot of data, which you'll get an opportunity to see some overviews of. You were all given or sent the volume one, which is the meat of the report, and volume two, which is the map section. And so if you have any questions prepared for Stuart, he'll be ready. And for me, I'll do my best to answer the questions. So Stuart?
Good evening, Chief. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. A pleasure to be here. Let me try to get the PowerPoint shared and you can let me know if you can see it.
Not yet, Stuart. We see your screen though.
Well, that's not good. I had it all loaded, so hang on.
While we're waiting for Mr. Gary's presentation to load, I just want to note that Councilmember Beloga is, has joined us. He joined us shortly after we began, but I just wanted to make sure that the record showed that he was indeed here this evening.
Do you see PowerPoint now?
We're getting closer, I believe, Mr. Gary. There it is.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, again, so sorry for the stuttered virtual start. Just real quick about myself, so you know who the, the talking head is, literally in this case, as we go this evening. Literally, I've spent 50 years in the fire service. I started as a volunteer high school. I can relate to volunteer paid-on-call fire services, went through the ranks, retired as chief of department. I've been consulting in the design of fire services EMS systems for 15 years, full-time now. Citygate's a virtual City Hall. Think of us as a set of department heads and experienced management-level executives and even in my case, ex-city council members who just love the public service and desire to give back. So having said that, you've asked for a performance review of your fire department, and I want to start by giving you the good news. You have a really solid department, one you should be proud of. You should take tonight's discussion as a best practices tune-up. Every department in city has issues they can always do a bit better on. You have some capital facility issues coming up. We'll touch on those. And that was really the, the main theme of this project. I, I deal with a lot of departments, mainly in the Western United States. I have clients who would dearly love to have performance metrics as good as your department does. And you continue to be one of the strongest paid-on-call reserve firefighter departments that I've run across. So when many cities are losing the spirit of volunteerism, where the workforce's ability to both volunteer and be gainfully employed, you still have a strong workforce and should be proud of that. I start all my briefings with this reminder, and many times newer elected officials and the public at home may not realize, in the United States, there are no mandatory federal or state regulations directing the level of fire service staffing, response times, or even outcomes. In fact, some states have no requirement for cities to even provide for fire services. Some states do, and they simply say provide for fire services. They don't tell local government how to do it. This is a local control choice in the United States. However, in the last 25 years, the burden of safety regulations on the fire service have gotten very expensive and cumbersome. And they state simplistically that if you provide fire services at all, it must be with the safety of the firefighter and the residents they're protecting in mind. We're going to talk about maps and statistics tonight. As you walk away or you read the report, if you haven't done so already in depth, consider fire services deployment about two things, the speed and the weight of the response. The speed of the response is a single neighborhood-based fire unit to go to a typical small emergency, single patient EMS technical rescue, auto accident, unattended food, fire perhaps on the stove that the caller tells dispatch is already out on arrival. The weight of the attack is your spacing of the stations across the geography, not so far apart as to be unable to quickly mass enough units and firefighters to stop serious fires from becoming catastrophic. So you have this push-pull tension in fire service deployment. You want the speed of attack, which is spreading stations to the neighborhoods, but you can't spread so few stations so far apart, you can't concentrate your forces on the commercial, industrial, higher-risk properties. The study talks about setting goals for fire services. Well, if it's a local choice issue, what should the council be aware of? There is a time-temperature curve. Building fires double in ferocity every 60 seconds they free burn. They're doubling in size once there's open flame in a compartment in a building. You ought to be considering EMS survivability in full arrest. You do not do primary ambulance response or first responder EMS. However, your fire department does do technical rescue where the patients need it. So you want to suppress outdoor fires before they spread and become the buildings or major wildland areas? Most communities desire, said simply, to keep small fires small. We submit your policy goal should also be to provide adequate response times to all similar risk in population density neighborhoods. So in other words, if I have four fire station areas that pretty much look the same in terms of population density, housing, commercial stock, paying all the same tax rate, they should have an equitable access to a neighborhood first responder. There's a large risk assessment chapter, just summarized, we looked at the hazards to be protected in Bloomington from building fire, outdoor fires, the medical emergencies you are responding on currently, hazardous material spills, technical rescue incidents, and waterside, open water rescues. You'll see in the risk assessment, we did a scoring methodology and we come up with a point system. I won't go through all of these, but you can just see, we look at different severity factors. We're going to typify in a moment risk, but to do so, that's based on population, building densities, the type of buildings, are they critical to the economic and safe survival of a community in a disaster or stressful situation, et cetera. So if we look at the risk score by planning zone, a planning zone is a fire station, a coverage area, and there on the left-hand side are the risk factors. And the scoring system, which looks at probability and frequency of occurrence, comes up with a point scale summarized here in color and words. In Bloomington, being the kind of suburban community you are, most of your categories' rate is moderate. The good news is you don't have any high or extreme risk hazards to protect in Bloomington. And your outdoor vegetation fires are fairly low in both frequency and possibility of severity. And most of the emergencies the department's going to are typical suburban, middle America, building fires, medical emergencies, hazardous material spills. Let's look at service demand. The number of incidents by year is roughly the same. It's a little volatile, the last three years. Fires are the smallest amount of responses, which is good news. EMS, you're starting to go to more and more EMS assists where the first responding police officer and the ambulance crew need assistance on scene. And then you go to a variety of other calls, technical rescues, resident assists, et cetera. If you look at the number of incidents by station, incidents are pretty much driven by human population issues. And where you have a greater density of humans and buildings and humans doing indoor and outdoor activities, you generate more incidents. Or older buildings, more risk for fire if they're not as well-maintained. So station areas one and three are the busiest, followed by, by two and four. And certainly where you have lower population densities or newer construction areas, in some areas of five and six, you have fewer calls for service. We'll look at the geography in a minute, what this means about coverage. So if you don't have a lot of incidents, do they all come in a four-hour time span of the day or 24 hours? So here's the total number of responses across three years. Midnight's on the left, if you can't read the scale on the screen, to midnight on the right. And what this curve shows is typical of most American communities, you do have a trickle of emergency responses between midnight and 6:00 AM. There's still human activity and issues going on, but as human activity rises with the morning rush hour, you build up to what I call the shoulder of the demand curve. And there about 10:00 AM on the left, you start to reach a fairly equal plateau of workload request hour after hour, and that tends to taper off again early to mid-evening as human activity is pretty much now home and the day's cycle is slowing down. What this means is you need a 24/7 minimum response to the neighborhoods. And I have clients who would love to, well, can I just have a fire station part of the day or a few days a week? And in summary, for Bloomington, your workload by hour of the day, day of the week, month of the year, which I've not all put in the PowerPoint there in the report, suggests you need a minimum 24/7, 365 response capacity. The next thing I look at is simultaneous incidents. So in a six-station department, if you had three or five simultaneous calls for service working, then you wouldn't have an effective firefighting force left if, for example, they were all running EMS or auto fires at the same time. The good news in Bloomington, you only have two calls open at once 12% of the time. That's almost nothing in the context of the American experience for a six-station fire department. It speaks to your, the quality and vibrancy of your community, your socioeconomics, your commercial building owners are taking care of their fire prevention activities. You don't have a high peak hour demand. If you look at the number of incidents by station by year, again, a little volatility, but still, station areas one and three tend to be the busiest, five and six tend to have the lower volumes. This table, you can't read it easily on a screen, but in a report, this is the percent of every hour across 365 days that each one of the fire crews is on an open incident clock. So each unit across the top, engine one through five, or six, excuse me. Midnight at the top, again, 11:00 PM at the bottom. What percent of the hour are the crews busy and does it reach a threshold that more crews are necessary? So in a larger, more urban department, these cells would be redder during the daylight hours. And I have clients who are approaching 30% workload hour after hour on some units. And that's the upper threshold where we tend to recommend you add second units to station areas. Your busiest hour of the day is engine one at 6:00 AM, morning awakening and/or rush hour such as this is in Bloomington, but it's only seven and a half percent of that hour annualized that they're on an open incident clock. So there's nothing in the simultaneous incident rate or the workload by hour rate that says you need more than the six primary units you're fielding today. So let's look at response time performance. Communities need to have deployment goals. The recommendation of not just Citygate, but the Commission on Fire Accreditation, the National Fire Protection Association. If it's the council service-level choice to set outcomes to ability to pay to occupant safety, what should your response time be? The fire department has a business plan that says the percent of all incidents that the first two units arrive in five minutes or less. That's not quite a comprehensive enough statement because as worded currently, the chief knows where the clock measurement point starts, but you and the public, or let's say a developer applicant wanting to impose a burden on fire services doesn't read the sentence and see where clock starts. The business plan goes on to state placing 15 firefighters at building fires in less than nine minutes. Those are both broadly consistent with best practice recommendations for the risks in Bloomington. Let's talk about, however, the time clock and what are the best practice recommendations? The customer service perception clock starts with 911 and Bloomington Police saying, hello, what is your problem? And the clock stops when the red fire truck shows up at the curb for the first time and the caller starts to feel like my, my emergency is now being taken care of. That's total. That's total response time, hello to wheel stop of the first unit. That total response time is broken into three increments that have different managers. There is the dispatch center. The fire chief is accountable for crew turnout time. That's hearing the transmission of the alarm, donning the mandated protective clothing and getting wheels rolling, and then the actual travel time across the street network. So for dispatch processing, current best practices from the National Fire Protection Association, we agree with are a minute 30 seconds. Crew turnout should take no more than two minutes to 90% of the incidents. Travel thus to be effective at acipia growing emergencies should be four minutes driving time for the first due unit. And if you need that weight of attack, the follow-on units, the rest of the unit should arrive within eight minutes driving time. So that means for customer service, the first unit should be there in seven and a half minutes from 911 saying hello to about 11 minutes and 30 seconds if four or five units had to all arrive on scene. So let's benchmark Bloomington to those numbers. For dispatch processing, your current communication center is slower to 90% of the incidents at two minutes and 41 seconds against a goal of a minute 30. There's some elbow work needs to be done there in terms of call processing time and/or dispatcher software interface with the computer aided dispatch system. Your crew turnout is four minutes to 90% of the incidents against two minutes. But let's pause here. This is really good turnout time for a paid call department where folks have to mostly come from home or businesses. So your evening and weekend calls drag up towards two minutes, four minutes, excuse me. But when you have the daytime duty crew, limited staffing hours, they do a little bit better. And we've talked with the chief about adopting a split turnout time policy. So if the duty crew, the stipended people are in the station, they should be expected to hit two minutes. And then you get what you get from home or business when you call in the rest of the force. But four minutes means you have quite a few active volunteers living fairly close to the six fire stations. That's really a good number in your setting. Your first unit travel time is 4:49 minutes and seconds against a four-minute benchmark. I have many suburban, urban clients who would love to have less than five-minute travel time to 90% of the incidents. So that again speaks to the adequacy of six stations spread across the community. And then your call arrival is 9:17 as compared to 7:30. We say, well, gee, travel time is only a little slow. You could easily get closer to 7:30 by shaving some time out of crew turnout and dispatch processing. Those are both doable without adding a single crew, changing the location, or adding a station. I then won't belabor this table in the briefing, but draw your attention to this is the travel time. Travel time only, the 90% of the emergencies by station area. And bolded are the minutes and seconds where, for example, in the upper-left corner, station one gets to 90% of the incidents, a little after four minutes. Where if you go right down to the slowest, station five, who has some challenging street network and geography to cover, takes over six minutes to get to 90% of the incidents. Some of this is also the luck of incident location. Station one and three have many more incidents closer to their station than do some of the other stations. So station one and three's percent of compliance performance just looks better because in many cases, they're only driving two or three minutes to get there. If you look at a histogram for a 911 hello to arrival, there is the 7:30 marker against the seconds on the bottom. And you can see you get to a few calls fairly quickly. They're across the street, they drive in at the fire station and say, how's it going? What's your problem? And they start to open the call and take care of it. To the far right of 7:30, you have a few calls that take quite a bit longer to get to it. Some of that's geography, some of that's on the highway or expressways, some of that's out on the water. So some of that residual right-hand graph is normal in a community with open space and recreation activities. Now let's shift gears and talk about the paid-on-call firefighters, the volunteers, to use a national term. In the upper-left are your age of years of service by chronological age. And your volunteers tend to be younger. Most of your volunteers are in their 30s and 40s, still able to have a career and give back to the community. You have a few north of 50. However, in the lower-right are the responses per volunteer. And of the 20 volunteers with less than 100 responses, 17 have been serving less than one year. So a trend that I've discussed with the fire chief to keep an eye on is as socioeconomics, and this is pre-COVID now. I'm not going to try to anticipate what the employment economy looks like in Bloomington, Minnesota in a year. But pre-COVID, yes, you're recruiting people in their 20s, but can they leave employment often enough for family activities to make a fire call? And your older volunteers have already built family and career around that. And if there is a trend of the younger volunteers not picking up as many emergency responses, that means over time, your total number of firefighters on scene could decline. Just keep your eye on that trend. Here's the other trend the chief and I have discussed at length. On the left-hand graph is the number of incidents by hour of the day. This is a year's worth of data. Midnight's at the top left, 11:00 PM at the bottom. And it shows that most of the incidents occur, again, like that earlier table I showed you, from morning awakening rush hour through late dinnertime. You just see the shifting of the bars in volume to the right. The green graph on the right is the same hourly demand table, but this is the average paid-on-call firefighters responding. And you can see the higher paid-on-call numbers are from midnight to dawn. So it's set this way, the two graphs are not in balance. You have more volunteers available when there are fewer demand for the volunteers. And in a two-income, probably commuter-based economy, that kind of makes sense. I've interviewed a lot of volunteer leaderships in the Midwest. You're not my only suburban Minneapolis-St. Paul area client in the last few years. And they talk about the challenges of managing a two-income, commuter-based economy, youth recreation activities, et cetera. So this is a compliment. However, Chief Seal and your leadership saw this coming. You put funding into limited daytime hour staffing called the Duty Crew Program. And what Chief Seal is doing with the Duty Crew Program is strengthening the amount of volunteers because he's got two to three to four per crew in a station available to respond. And that's frankly, the national, the natural arc of fire services. As volunteerism wanes, communities start with limited full-time employees during daylight hours that eventually spreads from the busiest days of the week to seven days a week. And when they finally can't retain enough volunteers evenings and weekends, they have to go to 24-hour day career crews. Let's look at geography for a few minutes. This is a map from, a summary map from the report, Bloomington, of course. Six fire stations, the fire station service areas for the risk assessment are shown in different colors. But what we've commented on this map, the report talks to, is all of your fire stations are varying degrees of older to very old. And you know this, it's been discussed in the capital improvement budget program. So we've marked on the map staffs thinking on what fire station should be replaced, rebuilt from the ground up next. As you know, station three's being done, that's in the eastern edge there. Station one could eventually need some updating. That's not an immediate need. For a variety of site economic factors, staff feels station four could be replaced next there in the upper center, followed by station two to the middle center. And then later, based on more benign age and building utilization factors, station six and five could be rebuilt in the outer years. Let's look at coverage. So that's you own and operate six fire stations. What do they cover? We use time-based maps in the report and also looked at traffic congestion loading. Traffic congestion slowing a fire apparatus is a fairly small impact in Bloomington, which is good news. This map shows the mile and a half travel distance. Insurance Service Office would like to see communities be within a mile and a half of a fire station. This is a little more conservative than the four-minute measure shown in the report, but it shows the gaps between stations in a briefing sense more plainly and shows you why there are some gaps. In eastern aspects of the city where you have a right-angle grid, street network, frankly, that's more efficient to serve in a mile and a half. And station one and three can cover quite a bit of their area. Just like you can see station two can to the southeast and down to the city limits and the waterfront areas. However, four, six, and five can't cover quite as far. And you have that gap between the four stations in the west. Why do you have that gap? Well, when you look at the big open space areas and the curvilinear meandering subdivision designs that have been built over the decades, you can see how you eat up travel time or distance much more quickly than you do in an urban grid road network. And we did some hypothetical models with the department. You could move station two and four a little bit when they're replaced, but frankly, there's just too much open space in western Bloomington to cover with only four stations. And you certainly don't have a call for service demand to justify a seventh or eighth station to plug those gaps. So maybe a little bit of a complicated story. You see gaps on the map and go, well, they should be covered. You really are getting the most of the calls at less than five minutes travel, as you've heard me say this evening. I wouldn't worry overly about that gap in western Bloomington. Having said that, if you find better parcels for two and four, can move them a little to the west without totally disconnecting from station one. Staff certainly well aware of this and can look at this down the road. Now let's look at a different map. This is eight minutes driving time for three engines, two ladder trucks, and a chief officer. You want that weight of attack to be where your risks are the highest. And in Bloomington, that's your more commercial industrial, higher workload areas. And that's the eastern two-thirds of the city where you can deliver that first alarm assignment anywhere within eight minutes driving time. And yes, out to the far west in the suburbs, you can't do five units. But the report takes this map apart into just engines and the western trucks. You can get three to four units in the western city. Getting five units and a battalion chief all to the western city limits is a tough challenge. And you just can't do that in eight minutes. If you look at the demand for service, this is all types of incidents scattered across the road network. And you can also see some of that open space area in the western city doesn't even have a frequent demand for utilization. This is a hotspot of EMS technical rescue events. This is not all ambulance calls. This is strictly EMS calls that the fire service was tasked to respond to. More loaded to station one and three's area due to population density and amount of human activity. If you look at building fire hotspots, tend to cluster a bit more again in one and three, little bit around five and four, probably more closely aligned with age of housing stock, ability to maintain heating, electric systems, et cetera. But again, you've got six well-located stations. You can cover most of the city with one crew in less than five minutes travel time. You can get much of these hotspot areas covered within eight minutes of a full first alarm. There's nothing here that says you need to radically add or move fire stations. So one of our findings in summary, the fire unit travel times are a little longer due to terrain, the road network design, and modest traffic congestion. But I'm not suggesting you add any additional stations. Call processing times are too long. That's something the two public safety chiefs can sit down and work on. Call to arrival time is significantly past 7:30, but is mostly due to dispatch and turnout time lag, which is correctable. Now let me shift gears. That's deployment, but part of deployment is having an incident commander. Stu, what's an incident commander? That's a chief officer who is in charge of one or more fire crews that's serious incidents. Remember I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation about the safety practices really increasing the last 20, 25 years in the United States? That incident commander has to be trained and certified to hold those duties and to command people going into harm's way to protect both the firefighters and the public they're serving. It not can't just be the first arriving volunteer who maybe has eight years on the job. You have four career, full-time chief officers, two paid-on-call district chiefs who handle this 24/7 from both work and home. However, one POC district chief position is vacant and the other retires in July of '21. It's a big ask to ask paid-on-call senior firefighters to get the qualifications, training, and have enough call volume to really be skilled as an incident commander. I'm asking the open question, and I have great respect for Chief Seal. I've known him since, I won't date both of us, but I did a project a long time ago for the city of Minneapolis. You have a tremendous fire chief and chief seal. I'm not saying that just to be complimentary for the sake of being complimentary. However, as chief seal and the others retire, can the city expect the chief officer coverage model to continue and assume that any newly hired career chief officers will live in the city and have the family ability to be on call frequently after hours? It's a workload lifestyle issue and some communities evolve out of it. You've got a tremendous group of chief officers today. Appreciate that, but it may not last forever. Next, let's look at ladder truck fleet size. Both Chief Seal and I see eye to eye on this. Your current model is one ladder truck per station to get a ladder truck quickly on a first alarm, major fire assignment. However, ladder trucks are now well north of $1 million to purchase. They're very expensive annually to maintain and certify. They're frankly, a dangerous piece of equipment and that need certified mechanics and highly trained and certified operators. We both recommend you consider reducing the six ladder trucks to three total. You can place the existing rescue tools on two other hazardous materials, smaller units. It'll save a tremendous amount of fleet replacement cost and annual maintenance and certification money. It has the slight drawback that POC staffing, if they don't respond quickly to one of the three ladder truck stations, the ladder truck response time could be a little slower to a non-ladder truck district. But you have so few fires that truly need the ladder truck. We can't recommend you just continue indefinitely the six ladder truck model. You probably have better things to spend your fleet replacement dollars on as well as training that many operators to be really, really good at ladder truck operation. So recommendations and next steps, work on dispatch and crew turnout times, we talked about that. Strongly encourage you to continue the funding for the duty crew model during the daytime as revenues allow. All six fire stations are necessary. I see no reason to disagree with the rebuild in the order envisioned. It's not saying you do them all next year, but the staff's current plan of totally replacing the old buildings as funds allow is a good one. You need those six stations given your road network and spread of risks. I would encourage the council to work with Chief Seal to adopt a more complete and outcome-specific service goal so that your successors know exactly what the city council is requiring of the fire department expects them to quarterly or annually report against. We've recommended you monitor the paid-on-call program's ability to meet your needs, both from staffing, the duty crew, and after hours. You can't work just 10 volunteers to the bone doing all the duty crew assignments. You have a large number of volunteers, a large number of those have to stay. A large number of those have to step up and take daylight duty crew assignments on a day off. Over the next year, I would develop a chief officer succession plan that as chief officers matriculate to retirement, you have the capacity to provide trained, certified incident commanders 24/7. And if you were to pause at this point and say, well, Stuart, what's the next step in fire services? What if we can't get chief officers to respond from home? Well, that's where you put a shift battalion chief on. You put a certified incident commander on shift 24/7, 365 to handle those duties. That's what the larger departments just have to do. And that's my last sub-bullet there, that the planning effort should consider three career battalion chiefs, especially if you can't retain the paid-on-call chief officers. What does a complete first-unit response policy look like? To paraphrase this, you define what you want to deliver. In this case, treat pre-hospital and medical emergencies and control small fires. The first unit should arrive within 7:30, 90% of the time, from the receipt of the 911 call. So anybody that reads that sentence knows what your customer service intent is and what is clock start point. And we break that down further into dispatch, crew turnout, and travel times. Everybody understands what the plan is. A multiple-unit policy reads the same way. Again, to keep fires near the room of origin, vegetation fires under three acres or spreading the buildings, rescue trapped victims within half an hour in a serious EMS or auto accident emergency, that multiple unit force should arrive within 11:30 from 911 call receipt. And again, the three segments of time are specific. Wow, what do we do with this? This is a workshop tonight. Obviously, the chief and management team are not asking you to make a decision, but to review the content findings and recommendations. Eventually, staff can come back and ask the council to consider revised response performance measures. And then you can direct staff in the future as part of the CIP budget process on what the fire station capital replacement plan looks like over time once you and every other client I've got in America catches their breath economically and knows what your capital funding is going to be for projects post-COVID. With that, I'll stop screen sharing unless I need to go back to something. And the chief and I are happy to take your questions. Thank you for the attention.
Thank you, Mr. Gary. Interesting and thought-provoking presentation. So thank you very much for that. Counsel, any questions for either Mr. Gary or Chief Seal at this time? I see Councilmember Lohman.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the questions that I did have, either for the chief or presenter, is you talked about the makeup and demographics of our fire department from a volunteer standpoint, the twenties and thirties and forties. And I read through it. Maybe I missed it. But what does the attrition rate look like for our folks that are in those age groups? And how do they compare, you know, region-wide?
Chief Seal and Mr. Gary.
There, the back feed's gone. So right now, our attrition rate is greater for folks with less than five years. Once we get people to about that five-year mark, we retain them longer. After we've had them for 10 years, we retain almost all of them. And there's a few we lose after 10 years, but very few. The reason for that is that the pension benefit is only payable after 20-year service. The reason for a higher turnover at five years or less is that's part of the dynamic you have when you're hiring young people. Many people we hire as a paid-on-call firefighter are in the process of finalizing their career or they haven't gotten married yet or any of those numerous kinds of life-changing events that happens when you're a young adult that affects their ability to still respond to fire calls. So that's why you see a bigger bulge in that age range and those mid-year age ranges of numbers of firefighters is because those are firefighters that have made it past Stuart's point, made it past a certain point. And they have incorporated their fire response and meeting their minimum requirements into their family life, whether it's work, sports activities, and taking care of their families. Younger firefighters struggle with that. Some of them manage to stay through. Otherwise, we wouldn't have anybody in their thirties and forties, but we do. And that's, I think, that turnover rate in the younger firefighters has gotten more pronounced in probably the last five years than before then. So it's more pronounced now. And I think that kind of speaks to that difference in numbers of firefighters who are responding and the ages of the firefighters responding and the number of responses they have being lower in our younger firefighters than some of our older firefighters. Did I answer your question, Councilmember Lohman?
Well, certainly, you've answered a part of it. I'm also wondering about how we compare with other paid-on-calls, you know, in the region. I know we're one of the hallmarks of that. I'm just curious about the demographics of those departments. But yeah, no, you've done a pretty good job. Not sure if you've got that information or if we have that information at all. But that would just be interesting to me in terms of how other departments are doing compared to ours.
Chief Seal.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lohman, that is, in fact, that same kind of dynamic has driven some of my neighboring departments and driven them farther along a changed trajectory than we are currently on. Whether you're talking about Eagan, Eden Prairie, Minnetoka, you know, many of those departments have changed really dramatically how they operate of recent. Specifically, Eagan, which has gone more towards career force because they were really struggling getting paid-on-call firefighters to respond. Eden Prairie, which changed their response model. So basically, they went to 24-hour duty crews, similar to Minnetoka. When you hit the northern suburbs, that's been kind of the same dynamic up there. They're adding more career firefighters and/or going to 24-hour duty crews with part-time firefighters to get their coverage needs met, primarily because they're having a hard time recruiting new paid-on-call firefighters and getting them to be able to respond when they need them 24/7.
Any further questions, Councilmember Lohman?
I do have several other ones, but I'm going to let my other colleagues go ahead and ask their questions. I want to just take the chance also, Chief Seal, to also thank you for your many years of service for our fire department. I certainly respect your levels of experiences and the things you've been able to provide to the public at large.
Thank you for that.
Councilmember Nelson and then Councilmember Coulter. Councilmember Nelson.
Mayor, and first, I'd like to echo Councilmember Lohman's thanks to Chief Seal, to all of our firefighters. It's quite incredible to me to have such an amazing volunteer paid-on-call force in a large city, one of the largest in our state, and they all do a great job. I do have a few questions here with regards to just the data first. When you are giving us the information about the times and the response times, is that for all calls or just fire calls? Because you went over that there's a number of fire calls, there's a number of medical calls and other calls. Are those response times for just a subset of those or are they broken down in any way?
There are times I showed you in the executive summary are fire and emergency medical, serious events only. So let's say it's a lift assist helping Mrs. Smith put Mr. Smith back in bed in the middle of the night. No, we're not measuring that type of call.
I just want to make sure that was clarified for people watching. In terms of the 90% response time and the times there, are there significant outliers and in particular, wondering about that kind of open area between Five and Six and Four? You may or may not know Bloomington, but probably in the area of Highland Greens Golf Course, right around there, Normandale and 98th. What are the maximum type of times that we see in that area?
So yes, I am familiar enough with Bloomington that those western station areas do have longer travel times. Rarely, off the top of my head, do they exceed, however, nine minutes, you know, nine, 10 minutes. But certainly, there's enough in the seventh and eighth minute that drag that 90th percentile number higher. So you still get to, that's why I showed you that bar histogram in 60-second increments. You get to a lot of the calls. You just don't get to 90% in some of those station areas. But it's not 20 minutes. It's not a rural response time. It's just not quite urban best practice.
Okay. And in terms of some of the information that we had in our packet, though, even at that eight, nine minute, there could be serious complications. I think there was information that after six minutes in a medical emergency, there could be, you know, significant brain damage. People could be trapped in houses in a fire situation. You know, that's just my concern about that area that seems to have the longer travel times. And I recognize that that's largely due to a large park that's in the way of getting there. And so when I'm looking at the locations, I'm just wondering honestly if those are the right locations, if we're going to be rebuilding some in the future.
Well, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, one of the dynamics that is driving that number up, as you look at Stuart's graph there, is that Station Five and Six also have some of my worst turnout times. And that means what it takes to get the firefighters to the station and the trucks out the station and on the road, which is clearly for our higher demand times why we've got a duty crew at Station Six, a duty crew at Station Two, a duty crew at Station Three, and Station One. So we can get vehicles on the road quickly to reach those areas. We've transitioned, we started with one duty crew at Station Six and transitioned to Two, then to Three. Now we're at Four. Very clearly, for our daytime response, we'd benefit from some better duty crew coverage, specifically at Station Five, just because of that lower corner of the city. However, if you look at our statistics, there's a lower call or lower call volume specifically during the day out in that area. So we are really covering the areas where we got high daytime volumes first with our duty crews and expanding as we can. One of the things that we found in the study, and I'll let Stuart jump in here as well, is that I have a relatively small number of paid-on-call volunteer or paid-on-call firefighters who are working duty crews. I only got about a 30% of my 120, 115 firefighters that are working duty crews. So I could have a significant impact or end up with a significant impact if those paid-on-call firefighters can no longer work duty crews and my ability to have those duty crews work. So we're doing a little brainstorming and planning to try to address that longer term. But that's clearly one of my limiting factors is my ability to staff duty crews and my paid-on-call firefighters.
And I appreciate that. And just in the interest of full disclosure to you and everybody else, I personally live in that gap, in that area where there's longer response times and things of that nature. So it's of particular interest to me and my family. But I just want to make sure we're looking at all the options. And I don't know where we would do that, but that's why I bring up the idea of the facility locations. If you shifted them slightly, would there be a way to provide better coverage? Because I know it's extremely difficult and I appreciate the information about the volunteers, the paid-on-call volunteers. Let me switch to a different area.
Can I say one thing, Councilmember Nelson, before you move on? And that is the station location probably has less to do with that gap than it does with staffing and having people in the stations being able to get out quickly. So when you think about capital improvements in the long term and station location and the costs with moving those station locations, that may be something you want to weigh.
Great. I appreciate that information. That's very helpful. One of the issues that you highlighted was the dispatch time. And I think we're, the call is 90 seconds and we're a little bit over 2 minutes and 30 seconds, so a little over a minute longer. Do you have specific recommendations on what we would do to close that gap? And the second part of my question is Bloomington does have its own dispatch. I know that for review process and, you know, I've been in there and I think folks there do an excellent job. But I'm just wondering if we know what the Hennepin County dispatch times are.
I don't know that right off the top of my head, but I can get that for you. I will tell you that we are working closely with police and dispatch and looking at automating parts of our dispatch process, which should take a significant amount of time off of that. Currently, there's a number of functions the dispatcher has to go through to actually dispatch a fire call. And we're looking at automating that. So once the call gets entered as a fire call, they hit one button and it actually starts the toning process for the stations. So we believe that through some technological changes that we're going to be able to address a significant part of that two-minute and 40-second timeframe and get it done closer to or even at 90 seconds or less. So we're currently working on that now and we're doing some automation with station alerting as well that has been installed in the new Fire Station Three and being installed in Station One currently and would be then installed in the next four stations as they get rebuilt.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate that. That's good to hear that there's specific things we can do to address that. With regards to the ladder truck and reducing that to three, does that impact our fleet service discussion and the maintenance and things like that? I know there was a look at or a difficulty with maintaining some of those larger vehicles in our current facilities.
I would still have three frontline ladders in a spare under this model. So it's not going to impact your facilities in the sense of needing to accommodate those bigger vehicles. I still have those bigger vehicles. What I discussed with Stuart was, very clearly, was that having and maintaining six of those very significant pieces of apparatus was a economic challenge. And so I actually contacted Stuart partway through this study to say, "Look, I see some economic challenges coming specifically with my fire equipment replacement fund. And here's what we're thinking." And he said, "Yeah, your thinking's right on." In fact, I would have said something except that your system is really a paid-on-call model. And it makes sense to have lots of equipment that you can get to the scene, depending upon who actually gets trucks out of which station. But clearly, that's a place where you could save some economics without impacting your ability to put an effective firefighting force on the fire ground. So we're not actually reducing our number of trucks. We're reducing the number of ladder trucks and we're replacing them with a much cheaper version that is the toolbox and people carrier. It just doesn't have the aerial device in it.
Shifting direction a little bit.
If I could interrupt for just a moment, Councilmember Nelson, if I could. Chief Potts, I see you've popped on here. Did you have a comment on one of the topics we were covering here?
Mayor, just wanted to, again, my name's Jeff Potts, the police chief. Just to the question Councilmember Nelson asked regarding the call processing time and looking at that since the consulting work has begun. Councilmember Nelson, our dispatch center has ran the numbers for 2020, 1,601 incidents. We've done the math. We come up with an average of 1 minute 33 seconds for this year, which, as you can see, is about three seconds from what the best practice average is. So I think we've done some work internally. Chief Seal mentioned some technology. We're going to make that also even better. So just want to clarify that I think the consultant used some 2019 data that we are running 2020 numbers so far this year and coming up with, based on some modifications and changes that we've made that. I think we've already made some considerable progress in shortening the call processing.
Thank you, Chief Potts. Councilmember Nelson, do you have additional questions?
I got, I think, two more. Um, and first, thank you, Chief Potts, for that information. I appreciate that update. With regards to the EMS, which is kind of sort of, oh, but part of this. Um, I know a lot of communities firefighters provide that service. I know we have a contract with Alina to do most of that. Um, are there any changes to us having our firefighters do that? Is, are there, does it consolidate some costs that allow us to have for on-duty, um, officers or firefighters at stations? Um, and that sort of thing, uh, just in, that may be a bigger discussion, just, just kind of curious about that part of it.
Mayor, Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Nelson, there is, there's several pieces to EMS response. Um, so we really don't have a contract with Alina EMS. They provide our advanced life support services for the community, and that is determined by the state. Um, the state has designated publics, uh, public service areas for EMS in the state. And those public service areas, um, have people, um, or organizations like Alina that, um, for lack of a better term, I'm probably not accurately correct, but they own the rights to those public service areas. So they have the license for our public service area and they are the licensed ALS provider for the city of Bloomington. Um, there is a considerable amount of cost to stand up ALS response, um, associated with ALS response. Um, currently, right now, what we're doing with EMS in the city is, is, um, Alina is still the ALS provider. Um, and then, uh, police and, um, fire and fire is supporting of police, um, making those EMS calls. Um, the fact that, uh, numbers have gone up is just reflective of the change in, in our socio-environment. And the numbers of EMS calls have gone up in the community. And, um, myself and Chief Potts have really taken a teamwork approach on this, um, trying to provide the best, uh, service to the citizens so that they get the quickest response that we possibly can. Um, we still got some bugs to work out in that system and we're working through those. But clearly that's why our EMS responses are going up is because, um, we're trying to provide the best first responder response to our citizens. And Alina is still, uh, meeting, um, county response standards for ALS response standards. So there'd be no reason to, um, try to, um, change that particular part of the system.
Great. Thank you. My last question is just in regards to if there's any other, um, and just kind of reminded me if there's any other parts of the, uh, fire services that will be looked at through this process in terms of the safety of our firefighters, uh, training, other, like the small equipment, the personal protective equipment. Um, are there any issues there that we'll be taking a look at as we go forward?
Um, um, Mayor Bussey, um, Councilmember Nelson, that was not part of the original scope of services. Um, but, um, I will say from a, uh, you know, I, I'd welcome a review of all the rest of those, but I would say just from a strategic, uh, perspective, um, we've done very well and the city has been, um, very accommodating with costs related to personal protective equipment and, um, um, uh, medical exams and medical reviews, annual medical reviews for all of our firefighters. Uh, we just recently purchased a second set of turnout gear for all of our firefighters. We just recently replaced all of our self-contained breathing apparatus, the tune of about $1.4 million. So we have kept up with our personal protective equipment. Um, we have kept up with, um, our medical reviews and our medical, um, um, exams for our firefighters. Training is always a bit problematic, um, and, but we're doing a, a pretty good job with training. And, and I think the thing that holds us back with training is just the amount of time it takes. And remembering that, um, trying to get, um, folks to come down to the fire station, usually after a workday or before their workday starts, because we do run daytime drills, um, to participate in training. And sometimes that training's pretty rigorous and pretty time-consuming. So training, um, is limited not by our ability to provide it, um, from an economic perspective, as much as it's just a time, um, drag on our paid-on-call firefighters and getting them to be able to commit the time, uh, becomes a little bit more problematic.
Um, thank you. I think that complies my question. Uh, Chief Seal, I just, I imagine that you've, uh, uh, been on top of the equipment and the PPE and stuff like that in the last three months, uh, for sure. So again, uh, thank you for all that you do for our community. Very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, actually, this is, I'm glad this slide is up because this is the one that I wanted to reference as well. And my rough recollection is that, um, east, in the city of Bloomington, east of 35W is approximately where about 40% of the population lives. And it's where we have 33% of our fire stations. Between 35W and Normandale, it's about another 40%, give or take. And another 33% of our fire stations. And west of Normandale, it's about 20% of our population. But again, 33% of our fire stations. And I know obviously, you know, part of the, the thought in, in that geographic layout is, is geography, right? It's distance. But, you know, we also know that, that, that sort of disparity in those three sections is going to increase because we know that, that we're densifying as a city far more on the east side. And, um, I guess I'm, I'm just wondering if, if one or, or both of you could talk about the implications that has for service provision and, and things like that? As we think about the reality of, of the future of the city of Bloomington, um, becoming more dense, uh, particularly east of 35W.
Mayor Bu- Bussey, uh, Councilmember Coulter, um, I'll start and then I'll let Stuart jump in. Um, we are aware of, of that. Um, and he just brought up a slide that shows the effective response force, um, travel. Um, and the red is actually congested and us making it in, in that eight-minute effective response force travel time, um, in congested conditions, you can see we got quite the reach east of 35W. We do a really good job of getting to those, uh, most of our addresses east of 35W. Um, and for a considerable portion of the city west of 35W up until we hit Highland Park. Highland Park and having two routes west on either 84th Street and/or Bullshockaby Road really limits our ability to access that west side. Um, so we're doing a good job of getting to those places. Um, with respect to your densification question, um, um, we recognize that. We recognize the increase in density. We, uh, increase, the increase in mixed-use development and that density. And, um, um, I would still say with our, our effective response force travel time, um, um, we're going to meet that need. Um, I would say that where we may struggle meeting that need is if my, uh, my, my crews, my effective response force, um, I'm, if I'm not able to, um, staff three or four-person crews. In other words, if some of those trucks roll with two firefighters on them, um, that is going to be more problematic in my higher-density, um, uh, more urban situations than, um, suburban situation. Um, so that is something that we are watching. That's part of that staffing issue that we are watching. Um, part of that ability to, um, attract, um, retain and grow new firefighters into more experienced firefighters, um, that can give us the time. Um, but that is certainly something that, um, as, as Stuart had mentioned, um, we are paying close attention to, um, because of the way the city is changing and because of the way the city's growing. Stuart, do you have anything to add to that?
Yes. I totally agree with what Chief Seal said and just added to that. Uh, we took a hard look at the in-depth risk assessment and your growth projections and densification. And that's why I spent the time I did on the response statistics of, to date, lower simultaneous calls, lower workload per crew. Departments either space stations more closely together or put two crews at one station, where the sheer volume of incidents outpaces the ability of one crew to keep up. And you're, you're a long, long way, if ever, from intensifying to that point. In other words, I call that sometimes the Manhattanization, uh, of a suburban community. You're just, even if you, like many in the Twin City metroplex are, uh, building mid-rises, uh, for both elder care and just senior apartments and condominiums, you can, you can build an awful lot up and not completely, uh, hurt your EMS, uh, capacity. What I would keep an eye on is exactly what Chief Seal just said, along with who becomes the first responder for EMS. So for example, Egan's my client, and I did the Egan study two years ago. And law enforcement was changing enough in Egan, they wanted the patrol capacity back, not going to every small to moderate EMS emergency with the ambulance. So you shift that to fire. And that's like much of America. Fire does the EMS first response past a certain maturation point in the community. But in a paid-on-call firefighter program, now you're asking volunteers to leave home or work, maybe multiple times per day to go to every minor to moderate acute EMS event to help the animals. So at that point then, you start to see a decline in volunteer response because they're selective. If it's a serious building fire, oh, I'm gonna go. Oh, if it's, if it's the third, uh, um, backache call today, you know, or bellyache call today, maybe I'll let Jane go because I've got to get the kids, you know, to sports. That, that kind of value trade-off just happens when you, you've got 50, 60-plus volunteers out there. So you can overburden your volunteer force if you turn up the volume too high on a moderate to mild acuity EMS event. That would be my watch-out thing. Point is, is that you look at proactive policing and patrol officer, 911 commitment versus proactive community-oriented policing time. And if you reach that point where they just don't have time to spend a third of a shift on EMS calls, then, then that capacity goes to fire. And with your volume of daylight hours, you're really then looking at a, a robust duty crew system at all six stations to handle the EMS first response. That's gonna cost you some money somewhere down the road.
So, so one additional thing to that. Um, Stuart's absolutely right, that, that could be a driver on the system. Uh, what I will also be, um, um, very straightforward about is, is that the other driver on the system is our overall number. All right? And so, um, despite, um, perhaps some people, um, selecting, um, you know, right now, um, we are at a fairly low number. We're about 117 right now. Um, in the next two years, that number will drop down to 100 if I don't add people. That affects the number of people that I can get on trucks 24/7. And, and so now, uh, while I do have, um, some selection going on, I, this is really my shortage on, on crews right now is more a function of the number of people I have and how I'm trying to staff, uh, staff, uh, staff stations.
Councilmember Coulter, further questions?
That answers my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lohman, and I would like to, uh, point out to staff and to our presenters, we're at past an hour on this item now, and this is item two on our agenda. So we've got a number of other things to get to yet tonight. So as you ask your questions and, and answer the questions, if we could keep an eye on the clock and, uh, uh, maybe shorten our answers just a touch. Councilmember Lohman.
So Mayor, let me ask the question. Uh, I imagine this isn't going to be the last time that we address this particular issue. Um, we'll probably have to bring this back to have additional discussion, um, around this issue.
I, I was gonna follow up with that same question, looking at the timeline of, uh, next steps, asking, uh, what the next steps were for the review of the content of the findings and the recommendations, and have, uh, the chief, um, give us an idea when he's gonna come back with, uh, revised response performance goals and talk to staff about the capital replacement plan. And I think we talked about a, uh, uh, staff, uh, staff replacement plan as well. Uh, so, uh, that'd be a, a follow-up question. And it's a very good question is, yeah, what are the next steps here as we move forward?
Yeah, I've got some other ones, but I know that's, you know, I, I know we want to kind of move this along. So I think that, uh, you know, I probably have just one other question that I want to, I want to ask, but I, I want to help you to kind of move this along, so, um, um.
Please.
Let me all ask my first question, then we can, uh, I'll let you, uh, answer that one later. I'll let, let that be taken later. Um, so I, I noticed, uh, in, in the, uh, in the report, um, Chief Seal, uh, one thing in particular was really interesting, like the graph where it talked about if you have a non-sprinkler, um, how quickly, uh, a room is destroyed and how important that response time is, uh, which made me think about the building standards, uh, that we have. And we look to the eastern part of, of our city, uh, you know, just in terms of the, those building standards around sprinklers. Um, and, and what we need to do as we look to put together our, uh, our, uh, you know, our plan in terms of what we want to, you know, kind of, uh, map that out. So I don't know if other cities take into account, uh, you know, that certainly was in the report, you know, what type of, uh, you know, housing that they have and that type of thing. But, uh, I'd just be interested to hear a couple of, uh, quick things around that.
Chief Seal.
Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Lohman. Currently, new construction has to follow, uh, the current state fire code. So if under fire code, it's required to be sprinkled, and it will be sprinkled. Uh, our current state fire code does not require, um, um, sprinklers in single-family or, um, duplex types housing. It's really based upon number of units and square footage. Um, um, and, um, to one of Stuart's comments, we've got a significant amount of our, of our housing stock that is of age and it, it's gonna take many years before, I mean, even if we did it on a, a replacement schedule now, where we had the ability to require sprinklers in those structures, it'd take many years to, to take that over. So your observation about response time to dwelling fires is right on. That's one of the reasons that, um, not only first, uh, first due unit, um, response performance is measured, but also effective, uh, response force is measured, um, just because of that, um, uh, that, that, that age of, of structures we have in, in, in a significant part of our city. All new construction, especially significant new construction, both commercial, um, and like hotel motel, office building, um, just about all of that is sprinkled now. There was a period of time in the city when we had a number of high-rises that weren't sprinkled. I believe now all of our high-rises are sprinkled, either because they've been retrofitted or they've been replaced, so.
Briefly, um, so you mentioned earlier, uh, that, uh, many of the cities around us are moving towards, uh, full-time, uh, uh, departments. Uh, what's the impact, uh, from a tax perspective if we do that? And, you know, how long on the horizon are we, uh, to that in your perspective, Chief?
Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Lohman, I can make this very short. I did not come prepared tonight to give you an estimate on those kinds of things, either on timeframe or cost. So we'll have to push that off to a different, uh, different meeting. And Mayor Bussey, if you want, I can jump right into your, your other question. Um, I, I did not, um, I am prepared to do the work to come back to you with, um, answers to the recommendations from the report. Um, I wanted to, um, get the council's acceptance of this report, um, with those recommendations being accepted before I, I presume to, to jump onto that. So, um, once, um, once the council accepts the report, then I will work with the city manager, come back and address those recommendations and answer any further questions of the council.
Very good. So we won't officially or formally accept the, uh, findings tonight. We'll just review them and, uh, council, any additional questions or comments or concerns? If you could direct them either toward the city manager or toward the chief, and we can continue this discussion. And we'll look forward to having you back sometime soon, Chief Seal, to officially adopt the recommendations.
Thank you, Mayor.
Council, anything else to add here? If not, Mr. Gary, thank you very much for your contributions tonight. Uh, good work on the report. Appreciate it. Chief Seal, as always, thank you so much for being here with us and thank you for your work here for the city of Bloomington. Greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move on then, if we could, to item 2.3, which is ranked choice voting ballot question. Ms. Manderscheid is here. Ms. Manderscheid is here with us this evening, and we're gonna continue this discussion. Ms. Manderscheid.
Good evening. I am preparing to share my screen.
And there we see it.
All right.
I think you're good to go, Ms. Manderscheid. Looks good.
Okay. All right, so tonight, we're here to talk about ranked choice voting, specifically to receive a report regarding the Charter Commission's consideration of the city council's ordinance 2020-17, and then to seek direction from you regarding preparation and timing of next steps. So with that, I'll get started. So I thought it would be helpful to provide a timeline to orient everyone as to how we got to this stage. So it's just a reminder, on May 16th of last year, there was a concurrent meeting of the Charter Commission and city council regarding ranked choice voting. Then earlier this year, the city council directed staff to prepare an ordinance. And then there was a public hearing on that ordinance. There was a public hearing both at the city council and the Charter Commission. The city council adopted ordinance 2020-17. The Charter Commission considered it twice, and ultimately adopted a resolution rejecting that proposed amendment contained in ordinance 2020-17. So now in the green is where we are tonight. This is the ballot language question that is for you for consideration tonight, seeking staff direction. I thought it would be helpful to remind you that pursuant to our city charter, a majority vote of all council members is required to adopt a resolution, which is, for us, at least for affirmative votes. Again, as a reminder, the due date to send ballot language to the county is August 21st. However, your last regular meeting in August, regular business meeting, is August 3rd. So the council would need to potentially call a special meeting to take action if it occurred after that regular meeting. The county does like to receive the ballot language at least a week early, and we prefer to send it to them a week early as well in the event there is a need to tweak anything. And so for your consideration and discussion tonight, as you recall from previous related discussions, there are two parts to the ballot question. There is the title, and then there is the actual question. The title is limited to 10 words and must adequately describe the question presented for the voters. And then the question itself must be able to be answered in a yes or no option. And then I thought it would be helpful for the body to also know that the other two ballot questions for consideration on this particular ballot are stated similarly to B with that particular setup. Shall the charter be amended? I just thought that would be helpful for your orientation. Otherwise, these are just three options that we came up with. Certainly interested in discussion and feedback. Ultimately, this will be committed to a resolution that will be put before you for your consideration, based on whatever direction you provide for me this evening. So with that, I formally present to you the report from the Charter Commission, which is contained in your packet, which is the passage of the resolution 2020-2C, which rejected the proposed amendment described in city ordinance 2020-17. And I'm here tonight seeking direction regarding preparation of a resolution and timing of that resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Manderscheid. So I have a question, I know, and I've received it from a number of folks and have seen it on social media and out and about, people wondering why with the, the vote of the Charter Commission, how or why this discussion can continue now at the council level? Could you, could you please explain the, the machinations that allow the, the city council to reconsider this or to think about this while it has come through the Charter Commission and was rejected by the Charter Commission?
Certainly, Mayor members, the Charter Commission's role in the particular process that is set up here, which is a council-initiated ordinance process to amend the charter, is the Charter Commission's role in that process is advisory. The Charter Commission had three options. It could approve, reject, or offer substitute language. It could also extend and ask for more time for review. It opted to reject. It did not provide any substitute language or ask for more time.
So the Charter Commission's role, as you said, was advisory, and it, it's not binding. It's like our other boards and commissions within the city, whether it's the Park Commission or, or Parks, Arts and Recreation Commission or the Planning Commission. It's an advisory recommendation to the city council. Is that correct?
Mayor and members, under this particular process to amend the charter, that is accurate. Under some of the other processes, they have a different role. For example, in the past, the Charter Commission has recommended to the city council that it wants the city council to act on something. Their role in that capacity is a bit different and nuanced from the particular process that we have here tonight.
Thank you. Council questions or comments on this? I see Councilmember Coulter and Councilmember Carter. Councilmember Nelson, is your hand up or is that up from last time still? Nope, it's down again. So Councilmember Coulter, Councilmember Coulter, and then Councilmember Lohman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I will just go ahead and kick this off and say that, that my preference would be option B. First of all, because as, as the city attorney mentioned, it is consistent with the language with the, of the other questions that'll be on the ballot this November. And, you know, for me, I, I think as sort of a process piece, I think it's important to state directly in the question what will be happening. And in this case, the question is, shall the, you know, shall the Bloomington City Charter be amended to do this? The question before the voters is, shall we amend the charter of the city of Bloomington to allow for, to provide for ranked choice voting? So I think in, in that sense, for me, option B is, is the preferred one.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So I would agree. I think I like the language of option B, and I like that it's worded similarly to the start of the other ballot question that we have. And I think it's just very clear what we're asking the voters to do. So that would be my, my preference. And then I would like to see this in front of the council, either at our 27th or the August 3rd.
Thank you, Councilmember Carter. I suppose the, I, I appreciate the input, Councilmembers Coulter and Carter, but I, I wonder if the, the first question that we should be considering here as a council, we obviously passed this unanimously and forwarded on to this, to the Charter Commission with the recommendation. And based on the Charter Commission's rejection of the language, rejection of what we were proposing, I wonder if our discussion should at least start with, is it appropriate or is the council comfortable and willing and desiring to move forward with this, even though the Charter Commission opted against it and voted against it? Councilmember Lohman, you're up next. I was wondering, did you have a question along those lines or?
Well, yeah, exactly. You know, Mayor, I don't, I think you probably crystallized my question right there. I wanna know, it's one of the things I was missing. I, I saw the ordinance that they rejected, but you know, I didn't tune into that meeting. Help me understand, you know, there wasn't a report as to saying why they didn't wanna recommend that. You know, they have five votes the first time, and then the second time it came back, there was two additional votes against it. And so I am, you know, I'm particularly interested in why they rejected it, especially with council coming with a, you know, a 7-0 vote to have them look at this.
And Councilmember Beloga is our representative to the Charter Commission or on the Charter Commission. Councilmember Beloga, can you shine some light on the, the Charter Commission discussion on this and the ultimate vote to, to reject the, the language?
Mr. Mayor, it's very uncomfortable to try to talk for some people, because each person had their reasons for voting, either for or against, some of which were discussed some or not. I can try to give you my impressions, but I can't, I would suspect that I may misspeak for a number of the Charter Commission members who voted against it. But my reaction is, is that the reasons were multiple, but it was mostly evolving around the timing and fairness. And the fairness issue was, is that twofold. One is that the council had stated that it would not take up during health emergency items that were not pertinent to running the business or statute required. And the second part of fairness was, is that there are two parts of this discussion. There's the pro and the con, and that the people who are con don't believe that they can adequately get out with their message during the time open. So they looked at it as, I think, a point of fairness. As I consider this, the additional item was that, again, the city council should be directing its time and energies to resolve in the budget issues rather than issues that could be handled at a later time.
Thank you, Councilmember Beloga. Council, additional thoughts on this? Councilmember Beloga, you wanna back in? I'm sorry.
Well, I've got a, you know, that was with respect to the question you asked.
Of course, go ahead, please.
And it's of the city attorney. And, and shame on me for possibly not have understood what the vote was on May 18th. But my understanding was is, is what the vote that the council made was to have the Charter Commission look at ranked choice voting and provide a recommendation to the city council. Then the city council would look at it and determine whether or not, as you've asked, is this an issue that needs to be put before the public? Is that an accurate understanding?
I, I'm sorry, Councilmember, I guess, were you asking me that question or?
No, that's for the city attorney.
For Ms. Manderscheid. Ms. Manderscheid?
Mayor and members, as much as I think I understand the question, that was, what was the city's role, city council's role back in May? And maybe I'll go back to the slide here. This timeline here, you'll see the, May 18th, the city council held a public hearing on an ordinance, and that ordinance contained the amendments to the city charter, and then sent it to the city, the city's Charter Commission for its consideration. Under state law, the Charter Commission has a review period of 60 days, and then it can ask for an additional 90 days. Again, its options are to, during that review period, are to adopt, accept, you know, adopt it, reject it, offer substitute language, or ask for additional time, review time. And it ultimately rejected it. They, the Charter Commission didn't provide any more specific guidance to me to relay any more of a message to the city council. There certainly will be minutes that will ultimately be provided and adopted by the body that, that detail that conversation. But I don't have any more specific messages to carry forward with regard to what is now before the city council. I only have the language in the state law as guidance as to what the next steps in that process are. They, they are not very specific about what those next steps should be as far as this, at this part in the process. Other than that, this is the next step.
Councilmember Beloga, follow-up?
I, I will at a later time. I need to organize my books.
Okay, very good. Councilmember Coulter or Councilmember Carter? I didn't see whose hand went up first. Let's go with Councilmember Carter.
They forgot to put mine down, so.
All right. Councilmember Coulter?
Well, I, I guess I would, I would just say that I, I think, from my perspective, I have no concerns about moving forward, putting this question on the ballot. I think this, this November election will be a consequential one, regardless of whether this question is on the ballot or not. We are electing, of course, the President of the United States. We're electing a United States Senator, members of Congress, county commissioner, members of state legislature, and so on. I think, you know, we, we allowed the, we allowed our declaration of emergency to expire. And, and to me, you know, I, I did that not because I felt that, that COVID was no longer a concern, but just this, based on the simple fact that we are going to have to manage what, what happens with COVID and what that means for our lives moving forward in a much different way. And I, I think, you know, we have to be able to walk and chew gum at the same time. We have to be able to do a lot of different things while also recognizing that, that COVID is still a very real presence in our lives. And I, I guess I, I just feel that I, I can trust the voters of Bloomington to handle an additional question on the ballot and, and do the research and, and be able to, to express their will, the will of the voters. And I, you know, I would also just remind folks that unlike a constitutional amendment, a state constitutional amendment, failing to vote on this question does not affect the result at all. If folks choose to pass over the question, if they choose not to vote on it at all, it, it has no bearing on, on the results. In order to pass, it needs 51% of votes on that question. So I, I don't, I don't have any issue with moving forward on this. And I, I think the, the conversation began, what, more than a year ago? You know, we still have, what, three and a half months till election day? I think that is, that is plenty of time for the voters of Bloomington to have a discussion and, and make up their minds.
Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you, Mayor. Question for the city attorney. I don't have all the information in front of me at this point in time. I'm just trying to ask a process question. I remember when this first came before us, that, that there were, as I recall, three different processes that we could follow. I don't recall there being one where by a majority vote, that we'd be able to put it on the ballot. And so I wanted to see if I could get you one to help me understand that piece of what, you know, am I misunderstanding what, what happened during that time, that period of time? Is there some piece of information I'm missing? I remember there being a 7-0 vote that we needed to take, you know, secondarily, a charter process, which I think we followed. And then I, I recall, I thought there was a third process. So that's my first question. My secondary question that I've got for you, given the, the import of this question that we are putting before or looking to put forward to to the folks, I want to just be sure that we are being careful that we do not have a risk with this. I know that we had some issues with how our trash was handled. And I want to be sure that we don't have any lawsuits. Is there anything in our process that we have done that puts us at risk? And what have we done to mitigate that if there are any, any risks for that? So those are my, my, my two questions at this point.
Ms. Manderscheid?
Mayor and members, you are correct, Councilmember Lowman. There are multiple ways to amend the charter. The charter can be amended by your proposal of the Charter Commission or by citizen petition. The charter can also be amended by ordinance of the Charter Commission or by the city council. There is a process which we have used in the past which requires the unanimous vote of the city council. That might be what you're remembering. And that is not the process that this particular amendment undertook to get to where we are today. With regard to the majority vote of the resolution for the ballot language, we and the legal department have been looking to see if there is any supermajority or other guidance in the law related to what the threshold is for that ballot language resolution. And the only guidance we have been able to find to date is in our charter, which requires a majority vote of all council members for all ordinances and resolutions. So we believe at a minimum that that would apply. We'll certainly continue to look, and if we find anything else, we'll provide you with updated information. But at this point, based on the research we've done to date, we believe it's at least four affirmative votes. We haven't found anything yet that would suggest a greater supermajority vote of two-thirds or something like that. And then getting some feedback, which is why I'm pausing.
Yep, yep. I wanted to ask a question if I could. So we haven't found any precedent out there and for that 7-0 vote, so that, so my understanding of what I hear, I'm hearing you say is that the charter, any type of change to our charter can be done with a majority vote of the city council?
Chair and members, just to be clear, it's not actually changing the charter. It's approving ballot language. So it's approving ballot language for the voters to vote on. The particular process that was selected by the council earlier this year and directed to staff to proceed with was to create, to follow the process that put the question before the voters. The process step where we're at next is approving a resolution to set that ballot language. It's not actually approving the charter amendment. That's what the voters will decide in November, potentially. And so what you're, what you might be thinking of with regard to the 7-0 unanimous vote is a different way in state law to amend the charter. There is a process there whereby you can amend the charter with a 7-0, or in our case, 7-0 unanimous vote of the council. But that is not the process that the council asked us to engage in earlier this year. So that 7-0 vote requirement is not applicable to this ballot language approval, based on the research that we've been able to conduct today.
Thank you for that clarification, Ms. Manderscheid, because, Councilmember Lowman, I had the same misunderstanding. But it's the matter that the 7-0 vote, it would be required if the council was directly changing the charter. We're not directly changing the charter here. We'd be simply approving ballot language to put in front of, in front of voters. So it's a, it's a bit different, but I agree. I was confused on that as well.
Yeah, I know. I was, I certainly was confused. I thought that if you, if, if what your question was asked still changes the charter, I thought that still impacted it. That's why I had the confusion. So I do appreciate that clarification. And I also, I want to be sure that the attorney is also able to respond to my, my secondary question, because again, that's part of the reason why. I just want to make sure. I think in this whole process, you know, there are some reputational risks, and so I want to be sure that we're doing everything that we can by the book so that all parties, whether they are in the majority or in the minority, feel that this process has been fair.
Ms. Manderscheid, all the Ts crossed and the Is dotted on this?
Mayor and members, to the, to the best of our abilities to date, we have researched every issue as it's come up. I will add that we've, where we have had the opportunity to make a more conservative choice along the way we have done that. For example, you know, having a public hearing along the Charter Commission, I thought it was appropriate to do that given that they were considering an ordinance. And so we added, or we didn't, we included that in the process as well, just as one example. There was some question about the parliamentary procedure at a commission, at a Charter Commission meeting. We addressed that and clarified that in the record. It didn't have a substantive impact on the integrity of the process, so I don't have any specific concerns about the integrity of the process. That said, we continue to get requests for additional nuances of legal research, including a couple of them today, and we're researching them as quickly as we can. And we'll continue to provide responses on those. It's, this particular process is also occurring somewhat similarly over in another city right now. And so in as much as possible, I think that the community is looking to their process in the other city and wondering, you know, why are we doing it this way and they're doing it that way? And I think it's important for not only the council, but also for the folks that are listening to the call today to just know that there are very specific timelines that things have to occur in when amending the charter. And that often guides the cadence of, of when we bring these things forward. So I, I will continue to provide research responses as those questions come up. And that answers the question, Councilmember Lowman.
Thank you. Councilmember Martin, then Councilmember Carter, and then Councilmember Baloga.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Mayor. I guess, just briefly, I wanted to say I appreciate the Charter Commission's conversation and advisory action that they took on this. But just kind of looking at how the discussion went, I guess the concerns that were raised there for me don't rise to the level of precluding the public from being able to weigh in on this. Obviously, in my time on council so far, we've worked on a lot of pretty huge items, but I think it's remarkable that by far, this is the area I've gotten the most correspondence from residents that want to be able to have their say and weigh in in November. And as Councilmember Coulter mentioned briefly, this is going to be, I would assume, a pretty huge turnout election. So while I understand COVID-19 potentially complicating things a little bit, I think punting this potentially another four or however many years out, we're not going to have the same chance to really have a lot of Bloomington residents' eyeballs on it, considering it, and giving us their feedback. And just kind of finally, I guess, kind of a half chewed on idea, I'm a little nervous about getting in the position of withholding decisions or ability to weigh in from Bloomington voters because of perceptions that one side or the other of an issue was better organized or prepared around something. I do think three and a half months is plenty of time to get the education out there. I'm sure it's going to be happening. So yeah, all that taken together, I don't see why we would hold this decision back from our residents to be able to give us their feedback. And I would say, second option, if we do move forward for question language, is my preference as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Martin. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So I am also comfortable moving forward, and I do thank the Charter Commission members for, for weighing in and advising. So when I look at the timeline, this conversation started back in May of last year. So it has been a conversation occurring in Bloomington for over a year. From my personal experience, and I'm assuming the experience of others who were candidates last year, this was a question that came up in every single voter forum. We were asked explicitly whether we would support putting ranked choice voting on the ballot. And so it is not a new conversation to Bloomington. And, and yes, COVID-19 has definitely thrown a wrench in a lot of things, but you know, I'm, I'm hard pressed to identify one other issue that we've not moved forward on. And so given the correspondence from residents, the interest in our community, the fact that this has been part of the conversation in Bloomington for over a year, you know, I, I feel pretty strongly that it's time to put it on the ballot and let the voters vote. And I feel strongly that during a presidential election, when we have incredibly high voter turnout, the highest voter turnout, obviously, you know, the more people weighing in on this, the better. And and so I will, I will end my comments there. And again, I do want to thank the Charter Commission members for the, the role that they play in our city. And I also want to thank our city attorney for the, all of the research and, and all of the, the response to the questions that so many of us have had. And I know it's not easy to kind of go through all of this, all the legal language and processes. And so I just appreciate the role that you've played in all of this too. So thank you.
Councilmember Baloga? Councilmember, I believe you're still, you're still muted.
All right, thank you. Well, I kind of gathered my thoughts in the interim. Councilmember Lowman asked a question that I wanted. And I think that there was confusion in May. And it brings up the point that we really need to be crystal clear on what's occurring with any vote so that we totally understand what the outcomes are. Because like you and Councilmember Lowman, I had a different perception of what the vote was November 18th. But be that as it may, I would recommend item B as the preferred language of the ballot.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Nelson, would you like in on this?
Oh, thanks, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember, thank you.
I'm kidding, of course. Yeah, I, I'm comfortable moving this forward to our next meeting to weigh action on. I did listen to the Charter Commission meetings, one of them on a cell phone while I was driving. And I'll re-listen to them to make sure that I completely understand the concerns that they had. But in general, I have always believed that this is a decision that should be made by Bloomington residents, not by us and the city council. Candidly, with all due respect to the Charter Commission, not by the Charter Commission either. And I don't think that's what they attempted to do. I think they raised in what was their mind, very valid concerns, and I appreciate that. But I, I think we should move this forward to the next meeting to be able to take action one way or another, to move this forward to a ballot. And personally, I've always wanted to put the views of residents ahead of my personal preferences, and I've tried to do that on a number of issues. And this is, this is one issue along those lines that I've heard from so many people that want to make a choice. And I've heard from many, many people that want to make a choice to do this. And frankly, I've heard from a number of people that, that don't want to do this. And I think the vote of residents allows us to understand that better. And so, yeah, I, I think I think going to that next step makes sense at this point, and, and let's see where it goes from there.
Thank you, Councilmember. Well, from my perspective, I would echo most of what's been said tonight because everybody has made, this has been a good discussion. There have been a lot of good points made. I, for myself, I'm, I'm always just a bit uncomfortable not taking the recommendation of one of our boards or commissions. I just don't, I don't feel 100% comfortable if the planning commission makes a recommendation and we go in opposite direction or for, in this instance, where the Charter Commission makes a recommendation and we appear to be headed in another direction only because we, we trust those boards, we trust those commissions, and we ask for their input. And they are an extra reach for us out into the community and an extra voice of the people of the community. And, and I appreciate their work and appreciate absolutely the work of the Charter Commission. But I have said all along, and all along being since last summer, as Councilmember Carter said, this was a topic of discussion at every candidate debate that I took part in beginning early last summer. And I evolved eventually to the point where I said I would support letting the voters decide. I had never been 100% behind. I've never been 100% opposed. I've always had questions about ranked choice voting. But I was committed to saying, yes, this is an item, a big enough item on, that it should be in front of the voters and let them decide. And as Councilmember Carter brought up very clearly, this has been in front of Bloomington for the past year. And I understand opponents concerned about the shortened time period. I do think three and a half months is a considerable amount of time to, to discuss the pros and cons of this and weigh the good and the bad. But this was, this has been discussed and bandied, been bandied about for the past 12 to 14 months in the city of Bloomington. And to, to claim to be caught off guard by this or not sure that we were headed in this direction, I just don't think is, is a legitimate complaint because this was a topic of discussion and this was something that was advocated by some candidates, opposed by other candidates, and now here we are. And so to, to be surprised by it or to claim that it's being sprung upon people, I don't believe that that's an accurate representation. In regarding which ballot language to move forward, I would agree with letter B. Moving forward with a letter B, I think, is correct. And if I can get an appropriate nod from everybody, I think that would be what we would recommend staff move forward in a resolution. And we could then discuss and formally vote on this at our council meeting on which date, Mr. Robrogi?
Mr. Mayor, we could do next Monday or on August 3rd, either of the next two meetings.
Either the next two meetings. So either the next two, and I don't know that we have a preference one way or another, but if we can get nodding agreement that B is the way to go and that we will put it on a future agenda, I think that is what we will, we will do then moving forward.
All right. I think I have my marching orders.
Very good.
With that, I will stop sharing my presentation.
Did we just freeze up here? I think we're good. It froze up for just a second, but I think we are good. With that, we'll move on to item 2.4. Our Lindell Avenue retrofit update and discussion of our draft concept plan. Ms. Wolf, are you going to lead us through this?
Well, I will just kick it off, is what I'll do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Bussi. Good evening, council members. I'm Barb Wolf, Community Development Department, and the item before you tonight is an update on the Lindell Avenue retrofit. And this project kicked off in October of last year, and we had representatives from Stan Tech Consulting Services before you with updates December of 2019 and March earlier this year, right before the pandemic. On the line this evening, we do have Jason Besky, Beth Elliott, and David Dixon. And they will be leading you through a presentation of draft concept plans, conceptual plans for feedback and discussion this evening. And before I turn it over, also on the line, we do have for staff, if there are council questions, we have Senior Planner Julie Farnham and also Planning Manager Glenn Markey Guard on the line. And with that, I will just turn it over to Jason to begin.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Barb.
Good evening. Welcome. I just want to say welcome to the team. Thank you very much. Good to see you all again and looking forward to the presentation. Thanks for being here.
Absolutely. Yeah, it's, it's quite a different atmosphere. As Barb mentioned, last time we were in front of you, in that room you're in right now was in March, right before everything kicked off. So I'll be back with some updates this evening. And so what I'm going to do, I'm going to run us through a PowerPoint here in a little bit, but I just kind of want to start by saying, setting up what it's all about. First of all, we were tapped by the city to develop a framework for future opportunities and growth along Lindell Avenue, calling it a suburban retrofit strategy. So it's how do we take this outdated, older corridor and create a more lively Main Street essentially for, for Bloomington? And the framework we're creating and ultimately what will be, what the, I think, staff will be looking at as well as the committees and commissions is a way to guide that growth, similar to what you're seeing in the South Loop right now. So what we're really doing is forwarding recommendations for future growth. We will not be, actually, the, the We will not be um, actually, the, the, the land along the corridor is, is mostly privately owned. Um, so in, in, in setting up the framework for that growth, it's absolutely uh, what it does is sets the expectations for the city, developers and property owners. It does not uh, entertain eminent domain or anything of that nature. One of the comments we got, we were at the planning commission last Thursday, is uh, the commissioners really wanted to see a lot of their favorite places uh, stay in place. And that absolutely can happen. So we are not uh, recommending anything be removed or taken off the table but that the residents of Bloomington can enjoy the corridor enhanced in the future. So what we're looking at in the recommendations we'll give you this evening are anywhere up to a 20-plus year plan uh, with some more immediate recommendations uh, that will kind of come out as we go through the presentation. And uh, today we'll be talking about the emerging recommendations. We're really checking in with you to kind of get some guidance on some of the large pieces we've covered. The recommendations are based very much on a solid market analysis that David will be covering and on community uh, engagement that Beth will be covering. And as I mentioned, we were at the planning commission last Thursday and they gave us a lot of good input. And uh, as we go through the presentation today, we'll uh, give you some of the uh, snippets of what the planning commission had to say about some of the items that we run through. So uh, with that, can everybody see my screen, the PowerPoint?
We can see you.
You can see me. Okay.
That's your screen, yeah.
Okay, okay, let me go and share this. Just take me a second. And now you should be able to see it.
Yes.
We see it.
Excellent. Okay. Okay, so uh, one thing I did last time we were in front of the council uh, is to talk about our draft vision. And I just wanted to cover that one more time before we dive into this because this draft vision really emerged from our community engagement and, and from our discussions with uh, yourselves and, and staff. And I'm, I have it up here on the screen and I'll read through it because I think it is that important. It really kind of guides uh, everything that we've been working on here. So Lindell Avenue, and this is looking forward. So what is that vision? Lindell Avenue is a dynamic walkable boulevard that connects a series of vibrant distinctive neighborhoods along one cohesive corridor. It is the true cultural heart of the community with a diverse population and interests that embrace equitable and safe neighborhoods for all. The corridor includes a series of destinations to live, dine, play, and work, preserving Bloomington's unique history while providing a framework to build new and exciting experiences. Public gathering places are conveniently accessible and reinforced with a range of restaurant and shopping destinations. Opportu- opportunities to preserve and enhance the environment are incorporated into future growth, creating a place where nature meets business. You know, I say this is a draft vision and it very much is. And if there's something you want to provide input on, we'd love to hear what you have to say. We do not uh, solidify this vision until the plan is complete and, and in the community's hands. So this is a living, breathing vision for the community that we would love to continue to see people provide input on. Uh, Beth, why don't you go ahead and uh, update them on what we've been through on the community engagement to date?
Sure. Um, I, I, I think the best way to talk about this is just to say how important community engagement is to your staff and how important it is to us. Uh, this is going, this needs to uh, be a well-vetted plan. Um, it needs to come out of topics that we uh, heard prioritized by various community members. Uh, and so it was important to us to have a robust process. So um, I think many of you may have participated in our first phase where we asked questions like, what's your six-word story for the future of Lindell? Um, and did that bucket exercise on the other side. I, I actually asked people to think of themselves as the mayor or councilmembers and we gave them three Bloomington bucks. And we had a variety of topics like beautifying the corridor, uh, supporting local businesses, uh, adding bike lanes, and asked people to prioritize their investment. And uh, that seemed to go over really well. Uh, we also uh, hired a public artist for this process. That's Monica on the right, uh, wearing a hard hat. She was doing an exercise in the first phase called um, mining hidden gems, which was really about trying to figure out not just uh, how people felt generally about the corridor, but what are these authentic elements of Lindell Avenue that really need to be maintained? People talked about the clock tower or the great bear sign or certain businesses. Uh, uh, and it was really important to have that discussion and that really helped develop the vision as well. And then uh, I think the last time we were with you, many of you may have come to the vacant storefront uh, in the Clover Center during our design week, which was um, a really interesting process to ever, get everyone's hands dirty. And uh, Monica Sheets, our artist, also uh, had a significant role in designing the space, coming up with a gardening theme. How do we cultivate uh, Lindell Avenue? And uh, your staff participated heavily in that process. So uh, when it comes to where uh, uh, the staff and the consultants uh, engaged people, there was some, you know, there was some of this, hey, here's a meeting, come to our meeting. But most of the engagement uh, activities were at places like Veep or the farmer's market or the community center. Uh, your staff went to the high school. Um, they went to talk to employees at Toro during lunch and there was an online survey. So there were a lot of, they were at Normandale. So there are a lot of places where we and your staff went to where people are. Um, and that is a much more meaningful and equitable way to engage the public. And so we think that this was a, a successful engagement process and really helped give us the information that we needed to help bolster uh, a lot of the direction that you're going to be hearing tonight. Jason, all you?
Yep, yep. You know, you know, let me just add to uh, what Beth had to say. Working with the staff was very rewarding in Bloomington. You have a great staff who is really on top of things and really made this community engagement uh, process fun. This has been a really exciting and fun plan to work on and kudos to staff for the job that they've done in, in cultivating this, this initiative. So hats go off. Uh, all right. Well, let's uh, move to our market analysis. I'm going to have David uh, talk a little bit about that. David?
Sure, thanks. And, and boy, do I miss those days because I haven't had a chance to spend a lot of time with such great folks for, I don't know, four months now. So um, so uh, thank you for the invitation to come and talk to you tonight. Uh, and one reason that uh, I think it's important that I follow Beth here uh, is because uh, and one reason it was so important to have a really robust uh, community process is because uh, the things I'm going to talk about represent probably the most transformational changes in our demographics and therefore our real estate markets. And therefore the pressures for change and the importance of managing that change that communities like Bloomington will face or have faced certainly in my frankly overly long uh, lifetime. So I want to start with what is happening to demographics. Um, and I want to emphasize, none of this is a sentence. This is all about an opportunity. Uh, and uh, uh, and, and, and understanding of the forces sort of knocking at the door. So um, for the uh, today, last probably 10 years, but certainly the next 20 years, the very large majority of net new households and net new households are our housing market. Our housing market is two-thirds of our real estate economy. Where housing markets go, our regions go. Well, uh, two-thirds of our net new households will be singles and couples. Those are folks without kids in their households in many cases because uh, we are aging. We're creating more, more older households than younger households. Uh, and there are a couple of very profound implications. Uh, one of which is a dramatic change in uh, the kind of housing folks are looking for. Uh, singles and couples basically without kids uh, look for multifamily housing, townhouses. Uh, they look for housing in walkable environments that among other things, provide a rich sense of community. Uh, they look for places where they can walk to shops and restaurants and the things that we probably, and to each other, uh, and the things that we probably know. I want to pause here for a moment to point out that uh, I, it's been fascinating. It's always fascinating to listen to your meetings. Um, that um, uh, COVID has certainly changed a, a lot, particularly in our present lives. But one thing it, it has not and will not change is our demographics for the next 20 years. Uh, they will remain resolutely um, pro-urban, I guess is the term. They uh, the, the folks without, without kids uh, seek different housing than the households with kids that built most of Bloomington and most of, of America, particularly suburban America. This can, this change can represent a tremendous opportunity for the single-family neighborhoods that lie on either side of Lindell Avenue. Uh, because um, uh, as we are moving forward, um, uh, I think everyone here knows our retail markets have been changing dramatically. We are shifting from auto-oriented retail to uh, housing, nearby housing and walkable oriented retail. Uh, retail that's supported by drive-to-retail is increasingly susceptible to competition from the internet uh, and other forces going on in our lives. Uh, retail growth primarily comes from housing within a five-minute walk. And when you can get uh, a thousand or more units of, of uh, housing and mixed-income housing at that uh, along Lindell Avenue with a five-minute walk of some retail nodes, they will come to life and with them wonderful walkable um, uh, wonderful walkable sort of main street environment. Nothing uh, plays a more important role today than a amenitized, walkable, and uh, sort of community generating sort of public realm environment uh, than um, in, in, in supporting uh, the prices of single-family housing nearby today. But literally, it is, it is the factor with the highest correlation. Um, so there is a great deal of opportunity here. Um, we have to uh, basically uh, uh, plan this. Uh, if we stretch all the new housing out, I'm sorry, why don't you go to the next slide as soon as you start to. Um, uh, we are looking at a thousand units the next five to seven years. Generally, a market that is established over five to seven years grows at a faster rate thereafter. We work with uh, Lori Volk, who did the housing work here, who is, I think, by far the best analyst of emerging and changing uh, housing markets in the U.S. Uh, and she invariably has said and documented this in her experience that markets grow faster, not more slowly. And I want to emphasize, COVID may change many things, but it is not this housing market. Um, so if we stretch this out sort of thinly along all Lindell Avenue, very little impact in terms of bringing retail and walkable main streets to life. We condense it into a couple of nodes, which my good colleagues Jason and Beth will talk about, the reverse. We can bring a lot of life to these streets. Office space is probably something that um, COVID is changing. It's, or certainly there's a lot less certainty. Um, uh, how much office space can be generated along Lindell? Uh, how much uh, how many jobs will be generated is unclear. One thing that is clear is that folks who, I use the old-fashioned term telecommute, uh, tend to be more interested in living in walkable mixed-use um, corridors like Lindell uh, than their colleagues who go to work because they don't find community work. So they look for it in, in, in where they live. Um, when it comes to retail demand, uh, I think uh, COVID-19, the pandemic has accelerated trends well underway. Uh, these are underway for a number of reasons. One is obviously competition from the internet, from digital retail. Uh, it is also related to the fact, and I'm sorry to say this, it's, it's not a very happy observation, but 70% of us have the same income in real dollar terms we had in 1970s. And auto-oriented, big box uh, and smaller box retail tends to be competing for a kind of a stagnant market. Restaurants, experiential retail, cool, unique retailers, coffee places are frankly uh, uh, competing for that other 30% whose incomes are rising and who are spending more on retail, particularly retail they can walk to and they support more retail for everybody else where they uh, choose to live. But housing is very much the, the key. And I want to emphasize uh, something that Jason said, and I know it's just uh, close to Beth's heart because she brings it up a great deal. There are some wonderful retailers. I can't think of a better place to get chocolate than along Lindell Avenue. Um, uh, that uh, we clearly want to work very hard. And, and one can use public policy to encourage that, the, the fact that they stay, uh, whether in their current uh, facilities or in new facilities that, that they can afford because of some incentives. Um, so this is not, this is a matter of, of improving, not, not replacing what, what is there. Um, Jason, is there anything else I should mention?
Nope, nope. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Um, if, let me ask quickly, are there any questions? Because confidence in what we're about to say really stems from, needs to stem certainly apart from um, how you uh, sort of interpret and think about the, these market numbers. Because they're very different from the experience of the last certainly 40 years. So are any, any quick questions or should we march on?
Council, any quick questions here? I would say onward, David.
Okay, thank you. I'll be here if you have questions.
Thank you. Thanks for sticking around. Appreciate it. Um, yeah, and, and that goes for the entire presentations. We uh, presented, we have a number of questions throughout that we'd like to cover in, you know, work session format. So at any point, you know, we'd like to keep this conversational. So do feel free to stop us and ask any questions along the way. Be happy to answer. All right. So I'm going to move forward and, and this last piece here is just to say goals to keep planning on track. Our, you know, the community engagement and analysis again are really kind of the foundation of this. And uh, a lot of the input we got from the community was just so helpful um, for moving some of these concepts forward. Uh, so if, if we can kind of get guidance on these three uh, primary areas, and I'll raise this again at the end, it would really go a long way in helping us out. And that is um, David mentioned the uh, the nodes. Uh, and then we, Beth and I will cover those in a little while. Uh, so the location of the nodes and, and uh, generally what we're proposing. Uh, we want to talk about mobility and multimodal access along the corridor. We feel access is key. Uh, and you know, mobility options are key. Uh, and then also approach to a variety of public spaces. We think recreational opportunities along Lindell are very important. We know there's some now and, and accessing and tying to the current ones as well as adding additional uh, public spaces for people to enjoy and create some of those social connections is really important to this plan. Um, so with that, what I'm going to cover first are some recommendations for corridor-wide. This is from American uh, or yeah, from 494 essentially down to 98th Street or a little south of 98th Street. Uh, within that, we have an overarching urban design framework. And that framework covers mobility recommendations as well as the open space recommendations. So you'll see those two, and I'll run through those, uh, I'll run through, actually, Beth, why don't you go ahead and, actually, I'm going to cover this first. I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. Uh, one thing we talked to the planning commission about was the location of nodes. And by nodes, we mean essentially walkable neighborhoods or complete neighborhoods within close proximity to one another. And through our uh, through our research and analysis and work with the community, uh, obviously the 98th Street node really rose to the top, uh, you know, given what is there now, given the planning that the community has already done for this area and given the fact that BRT is going to be such an important connection uh, to the remainder of the region as well as along this corridor. Uh, 98th Street node, you can see here how we define that on the south and uh, essentially goes up to just south of Veep on the west end there. And then the second node that we identified was uh, a law, around 86th Street. And we had a little discussion around this. Uh, part of the reason we chose the nodes uh, was based on a set of criteria that we developed. Uh, the criteria included things such as property values, ability to uh, assemble property, uh, the catalytic value of a property and the environmental values of being able to redevelop certain areas. So there was a whole list of criteria that we uh, we mulled over to really nail down these nodes. So the 86th Street node you'll see here stretches a couple of blocks north of 86 and a few blocks south of 86. Uh, one of the conversations that the planning commission had is, you know, does 86th Street make sense? Uh, you know, maybe 90th Street makes sense. And I believe where the planning commission landed on the guidance they gave us, they gave us was that 86th Street did make sense. Um, one of the concerns was that along 90th Street, you quickly have um, the interchange to the west. And the ability to keep this as a more local neighborhood feeling node along Lindell, I think is part of the rationale what uh, that drove the planning commission to recommend 86. They didn't feel a direct connection, but they also thought, you know, some of the, the bones for the development, that, you know, the roads, uh, the parcels, things like that made sense. So those are the T, uh, two key nodes that we identified. One thing our, our recommendations will do, we don't want to disregard the remainder of the corridor. You can see our study area here. So what we anticipate is we will give more specific guidance in the nodes and that we will also provide recommendations that cover the remainder of the corridor. So some of the guidance we provide in the notes should be transferable to the rest of the corridor as far as. The types of development, the disposition of buildings, the mobility options, all of those things remain the same.
Jason, I'll add that we're also choosing case studies or prototypes in each of the the nodes for things like. Financial feasibility of redevelopment and some mobility characteristics and open spaces. So we just needed kind of an organizing framework. And the note seemed like the best way to do that, but those those decisions can be very applicable throughout the corridor.
Okay, so with that, I, you know, if we could at this point, or we can save this for later in the discussion when we go through some additional material. But I, we want to get a sense of, do these nodes feel right to the council? You know, these locations make sense where we would recommend concentrating development along the corridor.
Counsel, any thoughts on that? I guess I would weigh in, obviously, the Ninety-Eighth Street node makes perfect sense, it being a a future transit hub. And that that absolutely makes sense and the redevelopment possibilities there are just endless, I think. And I agree with your area up by Eighty-Sixth. And for your reasons, why you chose it as opposed to like Ninety-eth. Where I agree, it gets a little, a little bit closer to the to the freeway and it just, it seems to make more sense in the Eighty-Sixth Street. And also, I think it it provides, it has existing amenities and existing properties. I think that to build on those as opposed to try and start from scratch somewhere else. I think the Eighty-Sixth Street node makes a lot of sense. Counsel, any input on that?
This is David, I'm, I'm sorry.
I see Councilmember Carter, I think she wants to weigh in and then we'll get back to you, David. Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So I agree, I think Eighty-Sixth makes sense, particularly because there's, you know, grocery there and some restaurants. And then, of course, like you mentioned Ninety-Eighth Street, because it's going to be a major transit hub. One thing I do want to just kind of flag, I guess, is Ninety-eth in general. I think we hear a lot of concerns about the speed of traffic through Ninety-eth. And as you go further west in the city, it turns into three lane. And then, of course, if you go east, it turns, it's four lane. And and so I guess I just want to flag that as a concerning area for me. And and I hear it from residents, particularly on the east side and those who live around Valley View Park and and Valley View School. I'm right there to the east. And so I would hope that, you know, we're thinking about that street as an area to slow down as we are thinking about this entire section. And I also appreciate you clarifying that it's not that the other parts of this quarter will be. You know, there will be no attention paid, it's just that there will be some some focus. In terms of finding out the different kinds of opportunities and then those will be applied to the greater area. So I appreciated that point of clarity.
Thank you.
Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I I agree with your your thoughts on Eighty-Sixth Street as opposed to to Ninety-eth. My my question is, I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit about why? That at that Eighty-Sixth Street node that you're, you include. Parks west of Lindell, south of Eighty-Sixth, but not north of Eighty-Sixth.
Yeah, a quick answer to that would be the existing land uses. So if you go south of Eighty-Sixth, you know, between Aldrich and Lindell. You have retail parcels that are much more likely to redevelop. One thing we wanted to stay away from was as much single family or residential development as possible. You know, we we like to develop these plans and and show that they can work without touching a blade of grass on anybody's front lawn. So I think mostly it was the sensitivity to those residential uses north of Eighty-Sixth. And in in Beth will cover this in a little more detail, but. You will notice how those parcels that are south of it really provide a special opportunity. And we can talk about the transitioning as well, but the main answer for you from us would be the residential uses. We wanted to try to stay away from that.
Okay, that's what I thought. Just wanted to confirm that.
And Councilmember, just for context, on the south side of Eighty-Sixth, you have. Gas station, car wrecks, velveline, pawn shop. So those are the uses that are on the west side going south from Eighty-Sixth.
Counsel, anything else?
Oh, sorry.
I think we're moving forward.
Right. David, did you?
Yeah, just want to comment, I think. I think one one advantage of going to Eighty-Sixth as opposed to Ninety-eth is. That while we're going to show lots of change along Lindell, the point is, without changing a blade of grass, as Jason mentioned, or affecting blade of grass. Is to bring the benefits of walkability of new kinds of retail, new amenities to as many of the, in close proximity. Within a relatively short walk of as many of the existing residents as possible. And frankly, that suggests sort of separating the nodes a little bit more.
All right, thank you. All right, let's move on. All right, Beth, I'm going to have you cover the mobility.
Yeah, sure. So this is a corridor study and corridor studies have their own opportunities and constraints. As you've, as we've talked about, we're taking kind of a node strategy to figure out how we create a compact density. That could support existing retail, existing employees and employers and future retail. It's still really important to look at this as a corridor though. And so there's a kind of two ways you can do this. One, you can kind of take a look at curbs out, which is looking at the redevelopment potential of properties around it. Or you can look at curbs in and really focus on the public realm. Obviously, we're trying to do both here. So one of the priorities that we have identified and heard a lot about from the community is. Creating a safe north-south route through a corridor for bikes. Pedestrians are our number one priority. We want to make a safe, comfortable, attractive pedestrian environment for people to walk to where they want to go or just wander around. It's not that way now. But we also want to find a good way for not just people to just bike through this corridor. From one place outside the corridor to another place outside the corridor. But to frankly, if they live on the north end of the corridor, to be able to bike down to the the Fairview Clinic. Or certainly to bike down to the the future BRT station. And so we faced kind of a conundrum in doing this. And I and I will say that there is a variety of ways to approach this this safe north-south bike route. You could look at it as an opportunity to kind of do something on an adjacent road like Aldrich or Garfield or Harriet. You could look at it as an opportunity to make Lindell a more complete street. This black line dotted line kind of jogs around. What we had heard is that people want this route, but they felt a little scared about being on Lindell. And so we tried to find opportunities to get it off Lindell. And then you hit large properties and then it's just impossible to keep off of Lindell. So and then what the other thing we did as part of the mobility framework is a look at where you can create. Street connections, there's a lot of large blocks through this corridor. Thank you, Jason. Jason's trying to catch up with me. Yeah, so so this is the a multimodal path. One thing I want to say about this, in addition to the fact that. In an ideal scenario, you have a permanent safe route for people to bike north-south on this corridor. And they don't have to be like crazy amazing bicyclists with, you know, an affinity affinity for danger in order to get through it. But that you can start to kind of do some temporary pilot projects, tactical urbanism. Where you see this example up on the 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 upper photo of just putting in some temporary bollers that end up kind of being permanent. And restripe and repaint the street. This would be a way for us to test out a variety of elements. We heard that the planning commission likes the idea of temporary. Striped bike paths or walking facilities. They want to make sure that we do it in a way that it matches well with the season. So it has enough time from spring to fall for us to really test out how it would work. This, the lower photo is an example of a permanent facility. So the planning commission liked the idea of a north-south route. They said if they had an option, they prefer to see it on Lindell. One, to try to create that more complete street on the corridor that we're focusing on. But also, if it was on an adjacent street, they fear that it would cause too much traffic. For adjacent residents. And they also like the idea of trying out some things temporarily, Jason, we can go to the next thing.
Let me just emphasize the thing in here too. So in addition to a corridor wide. Path strategy to for multi-mobility. We think it's important within the nodes themselves that, you know, people are on bikes are going to want to travel. More than just north and south. We think within each of these nodes, it's really important to have that connectivity and allow multiple modes of transportation.
So shared parking, as we started to look at how we could create more space in the right of way on Lindell for a multimodal path. You start to, you know, look at those spaces and realize that a lot of parking comes directly adjacent to the sidewalks. And so if you wanted more space without condensing the roadway and reconstructing it completely. You might be getting into people's property and purchasing some space. And the last thing we want is for property owners to feel like. A reduction in parking is going to impact negatively their business. It's hard enough to have retail right now and restaurants. One of the ideas that we had come up with is in kind of a phased park, a shared parking strategy. So also, a lot of these sites are very small, particularly on the west side of Lindell. They're going to be very hampered financially to redevelop. Unless they have a reduction in the required parking or another place to put it. And your city already has a shared parking strategy. So what we're looking at for this is to take some of these initial. Opportunities in a first phase of redevelopment and look at existing parking lots that aren't well utilized. And seeing if the city can be in the business of marrying property owners essentially, or marrying businesses. So they can share each other's lots. That doesn't mean building new parking facilities, that is not what we're recommending. We actually are recommending against that due to where shared parking and other shared mobility is going to go in the future. But an incremental approach that would help some sites redevelopment that would be redeveloped, that would be tricky. And this would be all triggered by demand. But we're just, we're trying to get creative with how to, I don't know, move the puzzle pieces of of parking around a little bit. To maximize the opportunities for redevelopment on some sites. And then the final topic for mobility are priority street connections. These could be street connections that have all modes, including cars. It could be biking and walking streets. But really, what we're trying to do is break up some of these large blocks. As you can see, there's a couple of pink lines on the west side of the corridor leading over to Aldrich. These are opportunities through long blocks to get people who live in the neighborhood to businesses that they want to go in. A lot of people are saying, oh, I have to walk all the way around, it takes a long time, I'm not going to do it, I'm just going to drive. So we are trying to look at places that these these street connections can make really strategic sense. For opening up the ability to create really awesome public realm and improve connectivity.
So we have a couple of key questions on the mobility. I think you said this, Beth, but just to to reiterate that it is a phased and a temporary shared parking approach. It would be surface parking situation. We don't want to encourage necessarily lots and lots of structured parking. We know the expense of that and and how that is impacted by demand. But so as an interim strategy for the suburban retrofit here, we we think that a shared parking arrangement. Is something that would work to get redevelopment going and move it through to a certain stage. And then the second one would be the path, the shared path along Lindell. What kind of route should we be looking at? You know, I'll just say, if you go up and down Lindell, obviously, there is some work that would be need to be done over time. But you know, should should a path there make sense? Access management will be key. We know there's a lot of curb cuts and in a potential safety issue to be mindful of, there's ways to work with that. But ultimately, looking at the city's complete street policies, does it make sense to have that that path? For multimodal access along and traversing Lindell?
I just wanted to quickly add that one of the virtues of of people on bikes is that they stop and shop along the way. And actually can represent a pretty significant source of business for streets along. Retail businesses along a street like this.
All right, so just wanted to open up if any there, any thoughts, comments, questions on the mobility piece?
Councilmember Lowman has his hand up on mobility. Councilmember Lowman?
So one question I had, I'm not sure if this goes to Beth or who on and the team would would handle this. I I'm curious about, you know, how do we, you know, we're moving in in a direction of a technology change in terms of driverless cars. And how does that inform this? You know, this this vision that we have here before us. And and how does it, how does it change that? So that's kind of my my one question I have in terms of that piece. Now, the other question that I have are just maybe it's more of a comment. One of the things when I think about these bike paths and that type of thing is that, you know. Right now, we're so oriented towards the car. And I think about, you know, the the Greenway down in Minneapolis, doesn't quite get to the vision that, you know, I kind of see. But you know, is there a way to 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 look at, you know, as we look at this long term? How do we, you know, make some of these things that are, you know, look at some of our alternative forms of transportation and gear them towards that? So that you're you're not, you know, adding a bike lane to Lindell. But maybe you're creating a different pathway that doesn't have, you know, the impact of having to stop, you know, with with the traffic. So it's it's kind of moving it on its own. So just those kind of, those two questions for him.
Councilmember, I'm sure that David wants to answer your first question. You're definitely speaking his tech, his language with technology. But David, let me answer the second question first and then I'll pass it over to you. The Midtown Greenway is such a unique anomaly because it was. At grade rail corridor a long time ago. And then the rail corridor itself was depressed. To make sure that they could have safe pedestrian crossings, frankly, over the rail corridor. And then it became an obsolete rail corridor. And then it took decades to to make it what it is now, a multi-use path. It is really tricky to do that in an accurate scenario. And there's a lot of places across the Twin Cities that are trying to do that. When you have this grid, it, a lot of those abilities to just kind of zoom through. Are really challenging without closing off streets. But there are a lot of people who, if they feel protected from traffic. And that doesn't mean it has to be off the curb. If they feel protected from traffic in like one of these instances in these photos, they will bike and they will bike with their families. It's when you have a striped on-street bike lane that you get. More confident bike riders. And so I think that it is important for us to be creative. I think that's what I would say. We need to look at a lot of options. And what just what we know is it's important to have a place for people to bike. That's why, Councilmember Lowman, we actually had tried to get it off the corridor as much as possible. Because initially, we heard from people, I would feel a little bit safer if I was either on Aldrich or on Garfield. And we just ran into so many complications physically to doing that. So what I, I think this needs to be a further, more studied topic. To figure out how to do this physically with the infrastructure and complications of the rail corridor and other things that you have.
Are you ready for part B? Does anybody else want to follow up with Beth? Or part A, sorry. All right, so. Counselor, I think you're you're talking about both a known and unknown future. So the the most important thing we can do really is think about adaptability. But having said that, I want to talk about some of the things we do know. And some of the things actually we are doing right now in other cities in anticipation of what's coming. So over the next ten, let's say twelve, maybe a few more years, but not many more. A majority of cars in the U.S. will have enough connected technology, not to drive themselves, but to self-park. And when cars park themselves, they park themselves much more compactly than we park them. And that makes investments in structural parking a really poor idea right now if one can possibly avoid it. Obviously, a price. Obviously, a project that opens today has to work today. But if we can share park, if we can provide inexpensive surface parking that isn't something we wish we didn't have for as long as we need it and avoid building parking structures from a financial standpoint, that makes a lot of sense. What will then happen, let's say sometime between 12 and 15 years, will be in the mid 2030s up to about 2040, we will be in the era of autonomous mobility. And in corridors like, or in communities like Bloomington, not just Lyndale corridor, and certainly the city, everybody in our near company who works on this says that it's not about everybody having their autonomous car. That will be very expensive. It will make much more sense to use shared autonomous mobility, which means you press a button on whatever 2034 version of a phone is, a 35 version, somebody picks you up very quickly and very inexpensively because you're not paying for drivers. Takes you to where you want to go. Now, whether this happens in 2035 or 40, we don't know. We know it's coming and we know we want to avoid. We want to build in the adaptability today to support that. One way we can do it that we're actually exploring with communities today, we're just working with the city of Buffalo on this, is creating the kind of, I won't call it a bicycle lane, I'll call it a shared use path that in a couple of years, when the technology is there today, I'd say the public confidence and regulatory climate is not there, but the technology is there, where we can have a automated, that means without a driver, vehicle running up and down this corridor, providing very inexpensive, essentially on-demand service for folks who want to move up this corridor in the same lane that the bikers and joggers are going because these things will have enough technology that they don't bump into other things. I'm not suggesting that the council adopt or endorse something like that today. There's a lot more proof of concept that needs to be undertaken. But this is something that communities are starting to think about and, and actually implement today. We're working in Dayton on a project that, that will do this. Is this answering your question? I may be tired and just speaking in headlines, but.
Oh, no. Yeah, I, I do, I do like what you're, what you're saying. I appreciate the fact you're talking about what other communities are doing around this type of piece. Yeah. And I, I just, I just hope that we're, as part of this vision, I just know that, you know, that typically when you do things, you kind of focus it around the car. And just trying to understand that, that understanding in terms of your vision in terms of, you know, is the car going to be central? I mean, I'm here that you don't want to do that, but I still keep, I keep seeing examples of where the car does still seem to be central, even if it's dry, you know, driverless, that kind of thing. And so I want to just.
Okay. I'd say we are working very hard during a period of where we anticipate rapid change. I've given you a plan that will work today in five years, 10 years, and 15 to 20 years, if that makes sense. So we have to not emphasize, but certainly accommodate the cars that most people move in today, make the fewest investments over the long term that won't be necessary and create the most walkable environment, which frankly has a whole lot to do initially with the nodes where we'll have the retail and activity that will really interest people and the ability to really create a rich and walkable environment. And I will say that I think you're, you're right on, and I sound very crass, but it's more, much more important than this, that increasingly, I keep coming back to real estate value. People are, want to live in walkable places, not drivable places today. And, or, and going forward. And the more we can begin to accommodate that, the stronger, the more we're going to leave Bloomington and Lyndale Avenue in a position to benefit from the demographic changes and market changes to come. Is that making sense? I'm sort of speaking in headlines again.
Oh, no, I, I like that. No, I like what you did last. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Quickly, one thing we can directly do in our recommendations and one thing that communities are increasingly doing is to accommodate either shared autonomous mobility or autonomous vehicles is curbside management. How do you design that curve to accommodate both pedestrians, you know, autonomous mobility that wants to, because, because pickups and drop-offs will all be curbside, not parking necessarily. So those are some of the techniques we can look at and forward as recommendations as well.
Councilmember Martin and then Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you very much, Mayor. With regards to the, the two questions here, I guess question number one, I would encourage us to do some more study on kind of the shared parking approach. Something I appreciated about our opportunity housing ordinance is how it spurred residential development and redevelopment by removing barriers to that work happening. And it seems like this is kind of a similar approach. So obviously more homework to do on to what extent we could have shared parking there, but certainly worth exploring. And to the second question with the temporary bike path, I'd also encourage us to take a look at that, too. I've got as of 2016, our alternative transportation plan document up. And it has marked down in the Lyndale Avenue retail and business note, a proposed off-street trail. So it's something we've been kind of discussing for a little while. But to kind of reinforce your point about east-west connectivity as well, because a lot of these proposed trails that we have, there's gaps of six, eight blocks in between these parallel paths in each direction. And I'm really hoping our commercial node redevelopment overall can kind of cement these areas, areas as centers of gravity, not just for the folks that might be living in these new mixed-use developments, but also for kind of the single-family neighborhoods around them as well. So yeah, I would definitely go yes to both of those points. And then just kind of maybe a quick question. When determining the timing on doing the tests for a bike path like this, is a little bit chicken, chicken and the egg to figure out how many developments do you need to have pop up so that people have places to ride on the bike trail? Or are those places not going to pop up because the alternative transportation infrastructure isn't there yet? How do you, how do you time when you run that test?
So one of the things I will say, I'll start, guys, is that pilot projects like that can garner a lot of interest in a corridor. So sometimes they're really good to do early on and you can pair tests like that with other activities, festivals, food trucks, things like that, and give people actually a way to bike to them. We could also try to pair it with some new redevelopment that's happening to get people excited about changes in the corridor. Ultimately, we want people to see this as a place that they can get to, hang out in, have fun in, live in. And if nothing else, seeing some of those small temporary activities happening gets the neighborhood really excited about the fact that, hey, we spent our time giving feedback into a plan. Now we're actually seeing some things happen on the ground and we don't have to wait 15 years for something to actually happen.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'll just add real quickly is, and this is one of the things that the planning commission emphasized was, if we do do a pilot project, let's do it right. And because people have long memories. So it's good to plan it, I think, as Beth said, in conjunction with, you know, exciting activities, but plan it the right way and, you know, everybody from the engineers, the planners are providing input on how to do this thing right.
Gotcha. Thank you both.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thanks, Mayor. Just had a quick question. Is Lyndale Avenue a city street or a county street?
It is a city street, which means there's a lot of flexibility and it's in your control.
Thank you.
I'm right there with you, Councilmember Nelson. I had that question as well. Any other comments to this one? I mean, my, my two cents, I think the answer to both of those questions is yes. I think a shared parking strategy makes a lot of sense. I think we've already got a structure in place for that here in Bloomington. So definitely makes sense there. And temporary bike paths, yes, I think it, it gives us a better idea how it would be used and better than, rather than investing in a permanent and hoping it works out, we could invest in a temporary and test it out. I think that makes good sense. Councilmember Beloga, see your hand up.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two questions. And I know this is planning. Are we looking at a road diet? And, or, you know, keeping this a four-lane road and gaining space for a bike path, walking path, and open road otherwise?
Councilmember, I will, I will start with answering that. We're not calling what we're requesting a road diet. I think that there's been, well, there's been a lot of collaboration with Public Works and Planning and other departments. We don't foresee reconstruction of Lyndale happening in the short term, which is why we're talking about evaluating it as a complete street multimodal path in the long term. If, when, if and when reconstruction happens, let's be prepared. There's also places where you might have four lanes, you might have five lanes, you have a slip lane, you have free rights, you have pork chops. There isn't consistency in this corridor. And so that actually might create some more opportunities for us to try things where we have excess lanes. And so that is definitely something where we haven't gotten to the specificity of that yet, but we're certainly looking at what the traffic is, what the traffic needs in the future, and where there is excess roadway that isn't really functional right now.
Thank you for that. Second question is, is and it's with respect to connectivity. So are we engaging with those entities north of 494? Richfield, Minneapolis, Hennepin County, to talk about what their plans are for Lyndale Avenue? It's sort of as, you know, a user of the streets and bikeways. Always frustrating to find that you're running along a nice bike path that ends as you enter another jurisdiction. And, you know, when we talk about connectivity, of course, if we can plan that in jointly with those other entities, this seems to make sense.
So Councilmember Beloga, that's actually what people are finding when they bike on Lyndale and Richfield South and then get to 494. So a lot of the road reconstruction that Richfield has done on Lyndale narrowed the road, added a lot more streetscape, added a bike lane and created roundabouts in strategic locations once you get up into, I think, the 60s. And then they end when you get to 494. So while we haven't connected through this process with Richfield, we already know that they've done a lot of kind of what we're thinking about in some respects. The other thing is that Hennepin County has been a partner throughout this process. They were a, they've been a financial partner in this planner and are very invested in the best practices that can be achieved on a Lyndale Avenue in Bloomington and how that could apply to other parts of Hennepin County. A retrofit, suburban retrofit is something that a lot of other cities are trying to figure out how to do. And, and I think we have a really great scenario here with, of course, as you mentioned, the, the, the fact that this is a city-owned street, that it's a good grid, that there's residential nearby, and you have a BRT coming. It's like all the stars are aligning to try to figure out how to successfully do this.
And then with respect to shared parking, I would support continuing to look at that strategy. And again, with temporary bike paths, I think test route is the wise route to take.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Carter, and then I think we can move on with this one. Councilmember Carter.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So this kind of goes back to my first question around NIGIF. So when you're assessing the effectiveness or the impact of the temporary bike path, will you also be assessing the kind of impact or the needs on the east-to-west running streets? And so again, I bring up NIGIF as an example. And so we just did this nice path on France and we put up these beautiful wayfinding signs. And one of them points and it says Valley View Park. And it's like two whatever miles. And all I could think was, oh, gosh, that's not going to be a pleasant bike ride for whoever's going that way. Like it'll be pleasant for a little bit, but then they're going to hit a point that's not going to feel so good. So I just, I appreciate the comments around connectivity because we definitely have a significant need for connectivity, especially on the east side. And so I hope that you're assessing the impact on those east-to-west routes and especially considering Valley View Park and school there.
Councilmember Carter, I, this has to be seen as a system. And while we are kind of studying this corridor itself, it is a corridor that is connected to, has to be connected to other parts of the system. The last thing you want is, as another council member mentioned, having a gap of six blocks that feels unsafe in your bike route when you had planned to go all the way to the river, let's say, or to a certain park. And signing it is kind of the least common denominator. You know, it is helpful to know that something is in that direction, but it doesn't necessarily mean that the first time you ride it, you'll feel good about it. So ultimately, this plan, when our work ends, will have to be coordinated with the bike system and the pet system and obviously the transit system.
Very good. Thank you much. Let's move on.
Okay. So let me dive into the open space framework. And so what we're showing here in, in the corridor is that we want to recommend a variety of open spaces. I'll get into it a little bit when we talk more about the nodes specifically. But what we heard from the planning commission is that, you know, the public spaces we have, and you can see the green around the corridor here, you know, it's a great asset to the community. You know, A, we need to make better connections to these spaces for, for the neighborhoods. And we think this plan really looks at that in creating connections north, south, east and west. They wanted high-quality public spaces and they wanted public spaces that allowed for a variety of activities for an entire family. So what we're showing in this open space framework, and you can see the asterisks here, some smaller, you know, the, the red equals some smaller public spaces where there's some incremental opportunities along the corridor. But then we're also showing in the 98th Street node, a larger public square. And you'll see that again in a bit. But we see all of Lyndale as, as public space. And particularly when you get off the curb and into the tree-lined or the pathways. So again, we want to look at this as an entire public space network that is layered with that mobility network that provides a variety of experiences, you know, whether it's a tree-lined path, north and south, whether it's a small plaza on the corner by the clock tower, or whether it's a, a new heart of the community in Public Square down near 98th Street. So again, we, I think we can maybe save this a lot of the discussion for the nodes as you see some of the concepts we float. But again, it's, it's about a larger public space. Somewhere you can call the heart of the community. It's where you go when the Twins win the World Series. It's where you go to have a farmer's market or, or a car show, which seems a little ironic, I guess, but it's, it's that heart of the community is what I'm trying to say and the place that everybody can call theirs from Bloomington. And then there's those smaller ones, as I mentioned, it's just public plazas, it's the meeting places. It's, it's all of those opportunities to create social connections up and down the corridor and for neighbors. Not only in the corridor, but also in the neighborhoods just off of the corridor. So one thing we wanted to try to get down is, does it make sense to, as, as these nodes come forth, as the corridor recommendations come forth, should we be looking at a variety of open spaces recognizing, I guess, in part that they will occur as development occurs and that a fair amount of this probably will be negotiations with developers or require a hand by the city to make these come to life. So I guess the, the key question here, and we can talk more about the spaces themselves again, is, does this approach to making sure there are a variety of public spaces up and down the corridor make sense to the council?
I believe the easy answer here is yes. It absolutely does.
Okay, perfect.
Unless I hear, I can't imagine any of the six saying, no, I don't think public spaces are a good idea. But I think this is absolutely a vital part of Lyndale Avenue or any place that you're trying to redevelop. If you don't have open space, if you don't have public spaces, I like to use the word, if you don't have places that delight people, you're, you're not going to have a successful place. And so I absolutely think that public spaces, open spaces, delightful spaces are absolutely essential.
Right. Okay. Well, I'll take that and then move us forward.
Council, anybody else want to add on to that? But I think let's move on. Thank you.
Okay, great. Okay. Just one note real quick before we get into Okay, great. Okay, just one note real quick before we get into the node recommendations. So what we're going to show is a series of illustrative diagrams that take these two key nodes and show what development over time could look like. It's not that things need to necessarily go away, but we want to talk, think about where are the opportunities for future development within the confines of these two nodes. In a lot of cases, you're going to be able to see buildings that are retrofitted. For example, in the illustrative here, where I'm, this is the Works Museum, for example. And that's a vital part of the community, a good cultural resource. What can be done in this plan to make sure that these gems, these sometimes hidden gems, remain as a vital pieces of this plan, of these plans? So phasing, just to emphasize that, again, these are 20-plus-year plans, that these are private properties and that what we're doing is setting the framework and the stage for developers and private property owners to do redevelopment. But also recognizing that, again, there's a lot of pieces of these two nodes that will likely remain in place for, in perpetuity. So with that, I'm going to let Beth cover the 86th Street node first.
Great. So one thing to add to the phasing, we heard very clear from the planning commission that, oh, I guess you could say they don't want to leave, they don't want to be left hanging when developers and property owners come ask for permission to do things. And so they want to better, they want to have a better regulatory framework in place that matches the, the recommendations in this plan. Because we are all assuming, as Jason said, that a lot of this will be reactionary and a lot of this will be setting the proper stage for developers to come in and ask for the ideal scenario rather than the minimum baseline zoning requirements. And, and that's generally, you know, the benefit of planning is it, it's not going to happen the way that we plan it exactly. But if we think of enough scenarios, particularly as David said about mobility and development, then we can kind of capture the essence of what we want to try to achieve, particularly in the nodes. So this node is eight, is 86th, as we talked about. And this concept plan, we understand is, is extensive. One of the things that we did in these concepts is also not just, we're trying, we're going to come up with a phasing plan, but what we also tried to do here is figure out what physically fit. What type of buildings can you generally fit here? Can you fit the amount of parking that they, that would be required in order to get to that, that market achievable demand that we expect to see? So Jason, let's pop through here. So we're, Jason, keep going, various phases. One of the top priorities, particularly at this node, is to expand the mix of uses throughout. We have a lot of auto-oriented commercial uses. We obviously have the large cub. We have industrial uses. We've heard a variety of times from staff that a lot of the industrial properties facing Lyndale on the east side, they have industrial zoning. And the industrial zoning right now doesn't allow for retail. A lot of them look like retail strip malls. But property owners come to ask for permission to put retailers in those spaces and, and, you know, the city has to deny them because it's not allowed. So how do we expand the mix of uses? Within the last few years, the city has studied what industrial throughout the city should be protected, what's in a transitional state, how to better incorporate uses like breweries or maker spaces into places like this. But ultimately, when you have kind of a really funky area that has industrial and residential and retail and auto-oriented uses, the best thing you could probably do is set the stage for, like I said, what your ideal scenario is for the future of it and then allow a flexible zoning environment to get what we want, but allow developers to come in and be creative. So let's take a look at the, the next issue or highlighted topic here at 86th, the Lyndale. Land use transitions. It's going to be really important to pay attention to the needs of the adjacent residential users and the residential homeowners. Aldrich is a perfect example. Like other commercial corridors throughout the suburbs that come from Minneapolis and St. Paul, a lot of times you'll have these very narrow blocks on either side where you have commercial activity, then you get to the next street over and it's all single-family after that. So a lot of what we need to think about in this plan are, is design guidance throughout the entire corridor that helps give some guidance to height in transitions. In this case, what we're showing is a very Kensington Park model. Kensington Park, if you're unfamiliar, is the development in Richfield just north of 494 on the west side of Lyndale, a very similar site. And ultimately, what they did was they focused their most intense development and height along Lyndale. And then they transitioned down to townhouses that really fit that character adjacent to Aldrich. Some of the challenges that we're going to see in these cases for redevelopment is the need to put together a lot of different sites. That's going to be the most challenging thing in 86. And I can't remember if that's the topic after this, but I wanted to point that out because there's a premium on the cost of land when you need to put together sites. And so we'll think of ways that we can best protect the, the properties to the west in particular. And that also goes with like protecting them from, you know, hiding, retail, parking, traffic going down Aldrich versus Lyndale. So there's a lot of different methods that we're looking at. Uh, the industrial properties, as I said, some of these properties have been designated as protected and others are more transitional. And, but a lot of these buildings are going to become obsolete over time, particularly over time of this plan. And so there will be situations where they could be reused and renovated. We've all seen a lot of awesome breweries, but that's not the only use. There might be other creative and innovative med research or like a high-functioning manufacturing, or you see here, workout facilities. What's great about spaces like this is that they're kind of just like big, empty opportunities when those businesses move out. So we have to find this balance between supporting the existing businesses that are there, particularly those that have employees, and helping the others transition either to renovation of existing buildings or new uses.
And I'll just add too, that one of the things that the industrial properties near Lyndale do is it, it makes it very much Bloomington. It's authentically Bloomington. And being able to maintain some of those pieces and just retrofit them will keep the character that's been there, but also give it new life and start to contribute to the new character that, that starts to develop.
Well, and, and you have a number of big employers in this corridor that are identified officially as industrial businesses. And they have a lot of employees that frankly are not walking to get to the sports page. They're not walking to the sports page for lunch or for happy hour. They're staying in the businesses and we want to get them out and about. And so also making sure that renovations of these sites include good walking spaces, plazas to sit and have a lunch, or things like that are going to be important to the future character of this area.
I'm just also pointing out during a time with a, a rapid economic change in which, which we are in the midst, industrial spaces that can be renovated easily through zoning, inexpensively into sort of cool new workspaces are a great way to encourage startups or encourage folks who live in Bloomfield or Bloomington and have wanted to start a business, have a maker idea or whatever, to sort of take root and, and build their business.
Yeah, and so, and that is a good point, David. One thing I hadn't mentioned yet is one of our, particularly my priority for this plan is to evaluate the existing zoning in comparison to our recommendations and make sure that if there are barriers with existing zoning, like that element of not allowing retail frontage along Lyndale, that we work with city staff to figure out how to offer more flexibility in the zoning, but still have the regulations that you need for frankly, some of the, some of the lowest common denominator property owners who will just come in and just say, just tell me what you want me to do. I will just do just that. So we have to, a lot of my experiences in the public sector and working with both the goods and the bads of zoning. And so we're trying to get some really great recommendations for the city to be able to implement this plan. This is, I will say that the, the bus site is probably the one of the most prominent sites along Lyndale right now. And it is also going to be the most tricky to see something happen there. It has a lot of stormwater constraints on it right now. You know, publicly owned, I guess, that's a, it's kind of a good thing. But what we wanted to do with this concept plan was offer a creative solution and using part of this site as a green stormwater facility with any site redevelopment and make that stormwater facility a real asset and amenity for this area. And so what we're showing right here is a little kind of ponding area that kind of goes from one section of 87th over to Lyndale. And you can use it as a, a walking path and it's a, it could be a really cool amenity, particularly for nearby residents.
All right. Thank you, Beth. I'm going to cover the 98th Street node quickly. So same ideas with the phasing and it just, you know, just to show that incremental over time and it sets the, the stage for development to, to happen. And it's, it's a good test fitting exercise. Couple of key things on 98th Street, and, and this goes along 86th as well. But one thing we need to be mindful of in, particularly since retail, it's uncertain at this point. Lyndale has a lot of retail. But one thing we want to try to do as we, as the areas, these two nodes develop, is make sure that we are focusing that ground level activation in, in key areas. And by ground level activation, I mean, does a building have transparency in and out of it? Is there a restaurant there where people can sit on the street? Or a retail location where people can see in and out? Activation is really key to creating exciting vibrant places. So part of what we're going to do with this plan is create a continuum of activation where we're going to recommend that the most active transparent uses are located in the key locations. And I'll point a couple of those out in a second. So I'm just going, just, just to say, there's a strategy in place here because if you look at the development in both 86th and 98th Street, there's no way you're going to be able to make an active street frontage for all of these areas. So we really want to make sure we're, we're thinking through this strategically and doing it in the right places to, again, create that excitement and that vibrancy. I would say one of the biggest recommendations so far out of this that we're working on is creating a new public park. And just to orient you, you can see 98th Street and Lyndale. We are showing a public square in this area. And where that sits is just north of the Clover Center site on the freeway Ford site as a portion of the freeway Ford site. And what it has tied to it is a portion of Aldrich, which I'll cover separately. But let me just get a little closer. So this is the, that public park site. This is that part I was saying can become the heart of the community, the place where people go to celebrate, to hang out, bring your families, shop, go to restaurants. There could be a stage here. There could be a number of amenities that the community can call their own. Or you could have neighborhood activities. So we feel in right around a little less than an acre, you can do a lot in less than an acre. So we feel this is a really good strategy. It's fronting Lyndale. It is fronting Aldrich, which ties to the BRT. So there's this whole framework that starts to tie together at the same time as creating this new park for the community. The next piece is the Aldrich. We're calling it a Greenspine. And just to dive in a little bit here, the way we see this working is that it is a very lush street, a, a public street that move, would move essentially north through what is the Clover Center site now, all the way up to Veep. I think, you know, a couple of the comments we heard from the planning commission, connectivity to Veep is important. We got to see firsthand how important of a cultural resource that Veep is to the community. And we want to see that embraced and, and access to that, particularly from the BRT. People who are going to Veep may not have a car to drive to Veep. They may have to walk. They may have to take a bike or take BRT. Either way, we think connectivity is key for this corridor here. The Aldrich Greenspine then moves from the BRT north up to that park and then starts to create that great retail restaurant vibrant area that I could see festivals or, you know, you know, it's where the parade ends and the community celebrates the end of COVID or whatever it might be. So those are some of the key strategies. We put together a quick model. We'll continue to work on this as the, the vision is more solidified. Just to orient you here though, you're, the BRT site is right here. This is, so this is 98th Street that goes through the middle and then Lyndale up here. So that, that Aldrich Greenspine goes north and continues to go north up to where near Veep is. This is what a public park in this area could be. You know, one, one of the things I'm really seeing out of COVID is that public spaces are more important than ever. People are getting out. It's, it's where you don't have to worry so much about social distancing. But it's also, you know, people are together and have the chance and, and opportunity to really enjoy nature. And it just rid, this whole pandemic has solidified to me how important public space is in making it a key aspect of the community and kind of the heart of the community and the backbone of this node and the, the corridor really becomes a key component. And those are the three, are the key things we wanted to take out of the nodes. But again, I come back to these key takeaways. I feel like we've gotten a lot of good guidance so far on a few of these concepts. But I guess I would just like to open it up for any questions, comments, or thoughts you might have.
Jason, can I mention really quickly just where we're going, maybe in a, in a sentence?
Oh, you know what? You want to talk about that first?
Yeah, yeah. So I, it's very important to me, particularly as someone with a public sector background, that we offer you a plan that can be implemented, that has a, and for me, that's like a critical path of step, 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 step. We might have 10 steps in a row and you just need to take each of them in order to be successful over the course of 10, 20 years. So a land use and zoning analysis, while some people find this boring, I find it really interesting. The planning commission found it interesting. But we want to be able to offer you a land use strategy and a zoning strategy that can really achieve what you want, but also doesn't put you in a bad position where you just don't have enough teeth to, to have a property owner do what the plan says. So we don't want you in that position. We also are going to further develop this multimodal strategy. Again, working with your public works staff hand in hand on what are some initial first steps we can do. There's been a lot of conversation about the pork chops along Lyndale and the validity or absence of validity for, for those. One thing that I've loved a lot in this process is that Sarah Woodworth is doing, is one of our financial feasibility analysts. And she is doing prototypical performas, one at the Clover Center site in 98th and one at the southwest corner of 86th and Lyndale. And she is trying to set up an investment strategy along with our site planner who's doing a visualization strategy. And what I think is so cool is that our site planner, our graphic designer, is working with our financial analyst, analyst to really put together models, both financially and graphically for these sites that work. And they've had this great back and forth collaboration where the site planner will design a site plan and then she'll give it over to Sarah and Sarah will test the numbers and say, well, we have to adjust the parking here, the parking there, the height here. And they went back and forth. And I think that's going to get you a really great investment strategy. It's also teeing up for us, and, you know, the staff knows this, that one of your biggest challenges with redevelopment financially is the amount of parking required in your zoning code. And that doesn't mean that we're saying eliminate any parking from developments. What we're saying is the market is going to want to do enough parking. Let the market potentially do the amount of parking that they want because that's actually going to make projects work. And so we'll be able to show you some of those numbers too.
David, do you want to add anything before?
The only, I, this is a little bit of a non sequitur, but as I listen to those talk about nodes, nodes, and nodes, it occurs to me, we're actually creating next-generation neighborhoods.
Yes.
And there are places where people are going to live in and love, not, not just feel they, they're not just technical terms.
Well, thank you, council. We've, we've kind of answered these questions as we've gone along here. But does any, does anyone have any additional comments or like to offer some thoughts on? But does any, uh, does anyone have any additional comments or like to offer some thoughts on uh, the concept as a whole rather than broken down into specific individualized questions? Councilmember Carter.
Mayor, um, so I guess I just want to provide an overarching comment. Um, I'm really excited about this. I really love the vision that you all have painted. I love the multimodal um, the, the priority around multimodal access um, along the corridor. Um, and I just really appreciate all of the, the community engagements, um, the thought and hard work that has gone into this. Um, and so I guess I just want to say thank you. And um, and I will just add that um, the multimodal piece and pedestrian safety was one of the um, things that I heard most last year when I was campaigning actually for city council, um, and particularly in this area. Um, and I also heard a lot about the desire to have neighborhood nodes where people could safely walk and bike to and visit restaurants and go to breweries. And so um, you know, I just really am excited about the vision that you've painted here. Um, and I think every single resident who has provided input into this process. And although I know it's going to take decades to kind of realize, um, you know, I think it's just really exciting. So thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
Others? If not, I'd like to, I'd like to echo what councilmember Carter said. It's uh, uh, I, I like the direction we're going here. This is a, an exciting direction. It's an exciting thought and exciting vision for what Lindell Avenue could be. Understanding, of course, uh, it's, it's a long-term vision. It's a plan. There aren't specifics involved here. This is a plan that we would like to see over the course of 10, 15, 20 years. And um, without a plan, uh, it, without a plan, we don't have a direction to move. And so I, I like the thought that we have a plan, even though we know that plans are going to change, even though that we, we can't foresee what will be coming in these years, uh, any more than anybody could have seen a year ago, what 2020 would be looking like right now. And um, but I think to have a plan in place and a plan that is uh, active and uh, living and uh, that we can follow as a community. And that the councils that follow us here will have uh, a guideline and a guidepost to, to work off of. I think it's, it's an exciting, it's a worthwhile endeavor. So thank you much for this. And um, now back again. I'm sorry, I, I think you, I think it was mentioned and I think, I think Beth had mentioned it, but uh, when are we, when will we see you again? Mr. Verbrugge?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, we've had more, uh, more work to do after this. The um, we have, uh, I think StanTech plan to work with us through the remainder of this year. So uh, it's probably a good idea just to throw that next step slide up once again, just to set the expectation. You know, the continuing engagement that I think a lot of people expect and have appreciated so far is getting hard to do. So that may extend us a little bit here. Um, but maybe uh, Jason can talk a little bit more about that.
Jason?
Yep. So our, our next touch point, so what we'll do now is uh, work through these items that Beth ran through. Uh, work a lot with staff over the next several months to put together a plan, a draft plan that we would, uh, my assumption is we will now, after the draft plan is in place and we've worked through a lot of these uh, items, come back to the planning commission and city council uh, for formal adoption. And I, I would say by the end of this year is uh, definitely achievable.
Uh, Jason, I also want to mention, Barbara, you can clarify this too, that city staff are also going to other commissions for feedback at this point in the process. So we're obviously the planning commission. We're here tonight. Um, I know that staff is going to go to the sustainability commission. Barb, I can't recall which other ones are on the docket.
Yes. So staff will update uh, sustainability. That, that actually is happening tomorrow evening. Uh, the Housing Redevelopment Authority, Creative Placemaking, and also the Board of Health are all on the docket right now in the next six weeks.
So we expect to get, um, we came to you with uh, uh, the direction that we absolutely need where we could either go in one direction or the other. So these two meetings over the last uh, week have been critical in helping to solidify a direction and we have gotten great feedback and we're really excited about how you excited, how excited you are about this. Um, and uh, we really needed to have this touchstone in, in order to know where to go. And so we can kind of run with a lot of the feedback that we've received from you, the planning commission, and from the other commissions over the next couple of weeks.
Very good. I'm glad to hear that you'll be in front of the different commissions and, and boards and getting their input as well. So well done. All right.
Great.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you so much. Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
With that, let's move on to item 2.5, discussion on council rules of procedure. Uh, Ms. Manderscheid, I believe you're going to kick this one off for us. This is a discussion we've been having over the period of uh, a few months. I think the last time we talked about this was back in February. And just trying to look at our rules of procedure and, and how we do things as a council and during council meetings and the steps we are, are expected to take and required to take as a council. And um, we've made it about, I don't know, are we even halfway through looking at our rules of procedure? I don't think we are. I think we're about a third of the way through. Uh, if even that, so uh, we hope to take a bite off here and, and move forward and still expecting there's going to be at least a couple more meetings, I think where we're uh, we're uh, looking at these. I think the idea was at the end of a number of different council or a number of different study sessions, we'd take a few minutes to look at different pieces of the rules of procedure. But again, I, that was back in February when I think we made that statement and things have gotten a little busy since. So Ms. Manderscheid, if you could lead us off. Uh, councilmember Balogu, you have a question?
I'll let Ms. Manderscheid, but uh, I do have uh, two comments since I wasn't
Okay.
Out of the country on the February.
Thank you. You're, you're, you're tops on the list, first on the list. Uh, Ms. Manderscheid, if you could lead us off.
All right, uh, mayor members, welcome back to the rules of procedure. I'll be honest, I had to go and dig into the paper files and re acquaint myself with where we're at in the process. So I attempted to give you a very high level um, discussion or sort of a reorientation of how we got to tonight. Um, it's been about almost six months since we last talked about this. For a real brief, brief introduction, understanding we want to spend about 30 minutes um, of tonight's discussion um, time on the rules. I'm certainly up to you, but it's my understanding that we're aiming for about 30 minutes and that's what we did in, uh, six months ago as well. So, so back in February and January, we had um, created a schedule where I had proposed breaking the rules um, of procedure discussion into some um, pods or packets or however you want to describe it of similar topics. And um, we made it through um, I believe page five of the PowerPoint um, relating to category A. Um, if my uh, notes um, are accurate from before. So the bulk of the topics in section A are category A were not substantive changes. They were rather um, changes consistent with what we had previously discussed. So for example, changing out numbers, um, updating footnotes, removing gender-specific references, um, that sort of thing. There was um, uh, requests to address um, term acting mayor versus mayor pro tem, make that consistent. Um, some things like that throughout the document and those would permeate those sections as well. But um, that is the gist of it. So I'll defer to you, mayor members, as to where you want to pick up on this. We can pick up on it um, wherever you would like. Um, and I um, just for your reference, um, we've been working off of the December 16th uh, 2019 discussion draft. That includes some, but not all of the things that we've discussed since we've had a couple of discussions since then. Um, but it's the, the document that we've been working from. If you recall, the last time we got together, you asked that I hold the edits um, until we got uh, a, a, a batch of them to make and then bring them forward to you. The council needs to take action to update them. Um, we did however, ask um, pursuant to a staff request um, to approve and make one change early on, and which was done January 2nd. Um, and that was to amend our order of procedure um, so that we added in approval of the agenda. Um, so that was done. Um, that change was made. It's obviously not reflected in the December 16th draft version that's attached because it happened after that, but it is included in the materials here. I also um, attached the request for council actions from previous discussions because I thought it might be helpful, especially for those newer members to acquaint yourself with where we're at in the process of this discussion. Now that's the background. I'll say um, as a lead in that um, as you, mayor, uh, mentioned, the, the world has changed in the last six months. Um, we're meeting virtually. Um, we're doing roll call all the time. Um, there, there are all kinds of new ways of doing business. And in preparing for tonight, um, I did um, ask um, the Minnesota Association of City Attorneys uh, discussion. People in that organization to send me their samples of their rules of procedure so that I could attempt to collect a couple of other approaches. And I'll just, I only was able to collect a couple. I didn't get too many um, samples, but I'll offer that um, as, as a way of observation that our particular set of rules are much more detailed and nuanced than other communities. Not to say there's one way better than another, um, but just to say that um, that so far, based on what I've seen, ours are nearly double in length and certainly get into a lot greater detail. So um, I just offer that up as an observation and um, we'll uh, we'll await uh, guidance for you as to how you'd like to proceed.
Before we dive in, uh, councilmember Balogu, you wanted to comment on our February meeting?
Thank you. I do. Um, there's uh, the comments are all on uh, section one. And I know that uh, we have an emergency meeting capability, although that's not in the rules of procedure. And uh, just having had one a short time ago, it seems appropriate to add.
Yeah. It's a good idea.
Thank you. Um, and, and I'm a little bit at sea if we got through the agenda part or not. But uh, if, uh, if I could, um, and this is uh, for two purposes. One is for uh, transparency to the public. The second one is uh, for uh, use and uh, preparation of uh, the console. That's speaking for myself. And I would request that all data to be presented to the council be included in the agenda packet. Uh, I know that may be a burden for staff sometimes, but uh, I think we go through and update the agenda packet afterwards, but I think it would allow myself to be more prepared and have a better understanding of the information. And that would include the powerpoints. The last item uh, regards the chambers as to the full location. We don't have any other options listed in the rules of procedures such as WebEx. And I know that uh, there's a desire to get us all back together. But since some of our uh, cons- some of us have concerns that uh, maybe others of us don't with respect to uh, being in chambers and uh, closer contact in uh, uh, a closed indoor environment. I just would like the city attorney to opine uh, on like, you know, the combined meeting of uh, in person plus WebEx.
Ms. Manderscheid, I, I'm, I'm assuming that's doable. And I think there are some provisions uh, regarding council meetings where some can be in the council chambers and others can be uh, remote. Is that correct?
Yes, uh, mayor members, that is um, uh, allowed um, during the particular pandemic that we have. And so if you look at the front page of your council packet, the agenda, at the very top, there is language um, there that starts with Mayor Tim, um, Boosie has determined blah, 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 blah. And that is taken, um, that language is there because of what state law requires. Um, specifically the open law, open meeting law, 13D point oh two one uh, speaks to what the requirements are. Um, and they are unique to either an emergency being declared or a health pandemic. So we are in the health pandemic uh, side of things right now. And um, that's why the language reflects as such. It allows for some members of the city council to uh, participate electronically. Um, and um, you know, and provide sort of guidance for us there. We can certainly um, you know, get into greater detail in our rules of procedure about that. Um, I, I would um, assert that um, there, you know, this is certainly unusual and hopefully this won't become a, a regular occurrence. Um, and it'll be a temporary condition. We can certainly mention it. Um, the League of Minnesota Cities has a section in their um, bylaws, uh, sample bylaws from the mayor's handbook that talks about the open meeting law and includes some guidance about that. We could certainly put some language in, in um, in this um, uh, rules of procedure about that. The one caution I'll have in, in reproducing statutory language into the bylaws or into the rules of procedure rather, is that when the state legislature changes it, and I suspect they will change some of the things because they already have changed a similar statute um, in 13D, the open meeting law. Then we would have to go and change and amend our rules of procedure again to catch up. So it does add an, an additional administrative burden that um, you know, supplements our rules, but isn't necessarily required because state law is going to supersede anyway.
Great. Thank you very much.
So just to clarify, Ms. Manderscheid, so as long as we are in emergency, in an emergency declaration of some kind, so the governor's declaration of emergency right now, we can, we can meet remotely, but if that would end, we would not be able to have anyone meet remotely. We'd all have to be in the council chambers. Is that correct?
Uh, mayor members, um, the uh, the site that we're, or the reason that we're, we are relying on at this, this current time is the global health pandemic. Um, that, it's occurring across the, the co- the globe. Um, there's nothing um, specifically pointing to the um, governor's uh, peacetime declaration. It is uh, at a level, level higher than that.
So as, as long as the World Health Organization declares a pandemic or has a pandemic declaration, we're, we're safe in, in doing meetings the way we're doing the meetings?
Yes.
Got it. Thank you. Anything else, councilmember Balogu?
Well, thank you for the time to uh, add those couple of times.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Again, wasn't, yeah, thank you.
So council, uh, looking at where we might want to go from here on, on the, on page 195 of our packet, the bottom, Ms. Manderscheid lists for tonight, we've got possibilities, category B, which is contents of the agenda, C, which is discussions, hearings and comments, or D, which is conduct. Uh, I'm going to recommend holding off on category D, conduct for a couple of reasons. First of all, I, I think we um, uh, we, we need, we need to do some work on it and I think we could have some uh, input from uh, other speakers on this. And I think it would be very valuable to, to hear from folks about how to deal with code of conduct and um, and, and how to deal with conduct general, in general during council meetings. Uh, my suggestion might be if we, if we kind of bang through category B, the contents of the agenda, which I think would be pretty quick and easy. And then work through category C with discussions, hearings and comments. Uh, adding or subtracting things as we go and get as far as we can here in approximately a half hour or so and, and decide how far we want to get along. Does that seem to make sense? All right. Why don't we plan on doing that? If we could go to section, now you're testing me with Roman numerals, uh, 24, 25 and 29, I believe is what it is. If.
Uh, yeah, we're, uh, among the, among the suggested changes are to switch our, swap out Roman numerals for, for uh, the Arabic numerals. So yes. 24, and I can give you a page number on that.
Please.
Uh, 20.
Uh, what page would it be in our packet? Any ideas?
Um, no. Let me see if I can figure that out for you.
223.
Thank you.
Yes.
There it is. Yes.
Okay. Okay. So, now, I, I will say that I have several documents out in front of me here, so if I, if I see a lot of paper shuffling, it's because I have a lot of paper in front of me. I'm bouncing between a lot of different versions here and trying to bring all of this together for you. So as we've done in the past, we have marched through the, the recommended edits. Now, these were recommended edits back in December, so they may have evolved a bit since now, so if something doesn't feel like it makes sense anymore, you know, or I don't have much pride in authorship on this because it's very old at this point, and so feel free to pipe, you know, sort of offer up any concerns or suggestions. So with the first section, all ordinances shall be reviewed by the city attorney. We, we moved, we removed prepared because we don't prepare them. We oftentimes are reviewing a draft by a staff member in another department. We oftentimes will work with that staff member, but it just is more accurate to say review. We sometimes prepare, but we always review. All right, moving down into the next section, this is edits under B, to make it more accurately reflect what, how we do our business now in that we don't have official sponsors of ordinances, resolutions and other matters before the council. We have people introduce an item by making a motion, and that's how I've interpreted the word introduce and sponsor by, by moving the motion. That said, if you'd like it to be reflected in a different way, I, I point that out for your consideration at this time because, because of the way we have done, we do business more currently is a little bit more casual than how it's described here.
I would agree with that. I think it is a bit more casual. Councilmember Baloga or Councilmember Loman, I'm sorry, Councilmember Loman?
Yeah, so question for you, you know, well, so you had missed, mentioned that, that other drafts that you've gotten from other institutions don't have as much stuff. Do they have something that refers to this in there, or is, are they silent on this? I mean, is it, I guess my question is, do we really need this in there?
Well, let me see. One city has, just says that ordinances have to be considered by the city council. It's all, they have, they have a couple of reading requirements. No, I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing this language in the couple of copies that I have in front of me.
I'll be honest with you, I don't know what the purpose of this really is. I mean, I mean, if we ever had any issue with this, you could always refer back to Robert rules of order, and so my recommendation might be to just go ahead and strike this. I just, I, I mean, to me, this seems pretty straightforward, you know, what you would do. I mean, this seems pretty administrative. I, I don't, well, somebody else has got a strong opinion about this. It'd save a whole lot of space, but just go ahead and get rid of that.
And we'll say in some other, in some other cities, sorry, mayor, in some other large cities that I'm, that I'm familiar with, things can't get on the agenda unless they have a sponsor and somebody that's carrying them forward. We don't have that tradition here in Bloomington in the time that I've been here. So, so I think Councilmember Loman makes a very good point.
So Councilmember Loman, you'd, you'd suggest all of section B introducing for passage or approval? Or were you just talking number one there?
Well, I mean, again, I don't, I mean, this seems to all, you know, relate to introducing of, or passage of the approval, and unless, again, somebody, I wouldn't say the entire section, because there's a couple of the things maybe down towards the end that we may want to hang on to, or we may want to move that to another section, but, you know, again, we have it in our Robert rules of order, so if it's not here, we've got it somewhere else. So I mean, it's not, do we really need to have both things? So.
So Ms. Manderscheid, would it be possible for you to take a look and trim this down to, trim out what we don't have? Because I, I agree, there are things in there about, I mean, a statement of purpose and effect of every ordinance stating, I mean, do we, do we do that in the official newspaper for each of them?
Mayor member, yes, we do.
We, we actually do, the, the purpose and effect is actually broken down, okay?
Yes.
All right.
That's a statutory obligation as well.
Got it.
No, I think, I think number one clause, paragraph one could be removed. I don't see it as adding much more based on how we currently do our work. Section two, we do because of what we feel is adequate notice under state law whenever we're going to post a public hearing notice. And with regard to number three relating to no more than one subject, this is something that's more legislative in nature in that there's a single subject rule in the state legislature. We don't have that in our city code, but it's here in our rules, and I will say that I have used this particular provision several times. Because mainly when things come to me and they, and they have many, many different subjects in them, and, and people are, are trying to be efficient, and then I, and then I say, well, we've got this single subject requirement here in the rules. So that has come up several times. With regard to the presiding officer calling for a vote when things are required to be done, I don't know that there is any other way of doing it, other than maybe, I don't know why one wouldn't do that, but I guess maybe there's a reason for that rule to be in there. With regard to the emergency ordinance, you know, we have actually dusted this section off because we have needed to comply with it several times recently, so we have used that. There are some provisions in state law about what needs to be done, but this has provided us with some guidance within the last six months. And then with regard to paragraph six, the signing, we, we use that, and publish in the paper, we use that. We, we, we use the publication by title and summary, we use that all the time, which is at the end of paragraph six. And of note, there's a little bit of a nuance in our rules that is different than state law, so I would prefer to keep section, our paragraph six. With regard to number, paragraph seven, I guess I would defer to the council and the city manager as to whether they'd like to keep that in there since it's about the level of discussion that the city council and, or the city manager, manager should have at city council meetings. And with regard to number, paragraph eight, same sort of thing. I'm comfortable with leaving eight as is. I think I talk a lot during the meetings, and if you'd like me to talk less, I certainly may, if you ask me to. And paragraph nine says that you shouldn't talk unless you're spoken to. That's pretty, that relates to the city manager and the city attorney. And then number, paragraph 10, I think we should keep in, that talks about the rights of city employees and their ability to testify or participate in the process. So, you know, to recap, paragraph one feels like it could come out and potentially paragraph four. But the others we have used and use on a fairly regular basis.
So mayor, one other question I would ask you and the manager, manager, the attorney would be, do all these things make sense to be in the rules of order? Do some of these things make sense to make their migration from here, you know, somewhere else to be, to be housed there? So I just, I want to throw that out to you, and I don't, I don't mean to boil the, you know, boil each, each section down, but I just want, from a long-term perspective, we may want to look at, at moving some of these things, you know, just out of the, the rules of procedure, because when it's so long, it's just very hard to, to kind of grasp and that kind of thing, and really just trying to, you know, and maybe the question we really should ask ourselves is, what is it that we're trying to accomplish, you know, overall when we look at these rules of order? And so I think we do have, as you've said, and the mayor has said, you know, we have a much more casual way of, of kind of utilizing these things. Certainly makes a meeting inefficient, so maybe there's a different place for some of these items to be. So that's a question.
Mayor, I, mayor, I would offer that several of these paragraphs could go into the administration, I believe the name of the chapter, the administration in our city code, and they would be in other city codes in a, in a sort of generic section like that in the beginning. So I could certainly look into which of these could be pulled over to there if you'd like.
I, I don't believe there's any harm in that. I think we, we certainly could, where possible, roll these into city code or, or put them in places where, I, I would agree, Councilmember Loman, our rules of procedure are uncomfortably long and burdensome. So I think if, if we could look at ways of doing that, I think that's probably a, a good, it's a worthwhile effort to, to undertake if it's not putting too much back on the, the legal staff to try and juggle things around and, and try and figure that all out. Councilmember Nelson? Oh, never mind, I'm sorry, I thought you were waving to get in on the conversation.
Sorry, I was waving at my daughter.
Okay, good enough. Councilmember Baloga?
Uh, thank you. For the city attorney, in item A, it says three members of council, but virtually through all the document, we have two. Is there a reason why we want to up the number, or do we want to just have consistency and use two through all the documents?
Mayor and members, I would suspect that three is on there because four is a quorum, and that would be a violation of the open meeting law, so I don't know the basis of two versus three. That's not something that was put in there during my time, but I would suspect that it's not any more than three because of the open meeting law.
Yeah, we, we use two again in paragraph six of the same section, so I thought for consistency sake, it may be easier to follow a pattern, so.
Mm-hmm.
Like I said, it's a net, so I'll consider it if you will.
Yeah.
Good suggestion, that makes sense. So Ms. Manderscheid, if you could take that on to see where we could fold this into code and where applicable?
Yes.
If that makes sense?
Sure does.
All right.
Okay, one section down. What's the next one? Does anybody have that in front of them?
Did we go on to 25?
Twenty-five.
Presentations and proclamations, doesn't look like you have a whole lot of drafts in, or edits in there.
Um, I think that this, oh, yes, this was a clarification as to, just a, just an editorial clarification. So there are times where the mayor is asked to give a proclamation at some sort of a community event as compared to during a council meeting, so this was just an edit to make clear that A, related to when those proclamations could be made outside of a city council meeting, and then B is the regulations related to at the city council meeting. And I will say that we just looked at this particular provision of, of rules very recently with regard to preparing the mask proclamation that the council listened to the mayor provide a couple of years ago. And then the last part, section C of this section.
Can you give a page number, please?
Oh, yes. It's page two twenty-six.
Thank you.
Of the packet and page twenty-three of the rules. That is just another editorial clarification for when presentations or proclamations are not allowed. I think that might have been a typo, or maybe it was just a drafting style, because if you go down and look at the first sentence of that, of below the header to the paragraph, it says the following types will not be allowed outside of or during. So I'm not sure why the word not wasn't.
Ah, understood, okay. So then the word not is added in there. That makes, that makes sense.
Or either, or maybe, yeah, I think so. It's hard to tell if those were, I think that those were my edits, or maybe they were already there. Maybe they were already there.
Mayor, while she's looking, I have another question here. So do, I'm just curious, do other cities get into this level of detail? I mean, this is a lot of detail for proclamations. I mean, I understand they're important, but just curious. Not that, no, not that other cities make it important, but I just, I'm just curious.
Okay, mayor, just to back up, to clarify my further point, the only addition that I made to here was to underline outside and add to make it more clear and consistent with section C, which had underlined the word not. So I'm sorry, I did not have any edits to that.
Got it.
It was just a reflection of the strike under. And then what, with regard to what other cities do, let me do a quick check. I will say that I have in other communities had the experience of a lot of people wanting the mayor to come to, you know, the hundredth anniversary of somebody or something like that, and that impacts the availability of the mayor to do other duties, or they, they want a proclamation for something that isn't quite related to city business, and, and so there has been efforts to, to sort of scope what are acceptable uses of a city proclamation in that it, it is an official document of the city. So I, although I don't know, because I wasn't here when it was drafted, it's been my experience that that is sort of the genesis of why provisions like this are in city bylaws, rules, that sort of thing, as a way of a guidepost. Either the other way to handle would be to put it in a policy, which we have, you know, we have other policies too that relate to a wide variety of topics. I don't think it's entirely unusual to, to be in a, in the rules, but it could certainly also be in a policy, given that it usually involves several staff members that work to prepare and schedule it. But I'm not seeing it in the two samples that I'm looking at here, and I don't have a, I don't have a great index on my league version to be able to find it quickly. But I don't recall seeing it there. Well, there's a very small section in the league's bylaws, one sentence long.
All right, so we're getting a bit deep in the weeds is what you're saying there to, to find comps there, so.
Well, you know, it's just one, just another, just a, a guidepost for, for where others are. You know, we have, like I said, we did use it recently. I suspect that we have used it before. The other thing I'll mention is that it does relate to our flag policy in that there is a linkage to proclamations in what's acceptable and allowable for flag flying.
Yes, it is. That's right.
So there is, there is some linkage there that we would need to potentially unwind.
Okay. Any other thoughts on that? Anyone?
Mayor, just, I, I'd rather we just leave it for now, maybe look at that at some other future date.
I think considering the, the limited number of changes there, I think that makes good sense.
Should we move on to the next one?
Next one, I think, is section 29, which is on page two twenty-eight, and I do not see any changes in section 29, appointment of persons to city boards and commissions.
Mayor, actually, there's one more thing I wanted to just highlight for you, for the body, and that is, within that section that we just finished talking about with regard to proclamations, presentations, and there is an edit on the final section D of that, of that section, and it talks about presentation materials. And it's, I did a bunch of research on this because I, I was originally thinking that it should no longer be there, but I came to learn that this was put in specifically several years ago, 2009, I believe, because, or no, I don't exactly when, but a while ago, maybe 2010, because folks were delivering, members of the public were delivering PowerPoint presentations and videos and that sort of thing at the very late in time, so that our AV staff were scrambling to try and get them up. There was a lot of frustration on, on both sides as to things. as to things being ready to go. There was no way to check to make sure they didn't have viruses on them and all the rest. And then we had, you know, we suffered, the presentation materials suffered because we didn't have enough time to adequately organize them for presentation. So I just made a clarification here because it wasn't clear to me when I read it, that this particular provision applies to those materials when they're provided by them. So that's just a minor point of clarification.
All right. And as I said, I believe section 29, there were no changes there.
So I do not see any changes.
Which then as a, which then we'd, we'd wrap up category B, the contents of the agenda. It being 10 after 10 already. I don't know that we want to dive into category C. And as I said, I'd like to hold off on D. I want to be respectful of folks' time here as we, but I, but I do want to make sure that we get this on the agenda on a regular basis because I, I think this is most tolerable in small bites rather than trying to take that all at once. And let's, if we could do that, it would be greatly appreciated if we could simply do that. I would, as we wrap up here, I would like to add one thing for everybody's consideration about our rules of procedure and most specifically about our public comment period. And I would like to propose some significant changes in the way that we conduct our public comment period. And we've talked about this a bit in the past, and if you could hear me out, and again, we could, it's something to chew on tonight, and we can take this up later, and we can start thinking about it. So as I said, changes to our public comment period, and, and here's why. First of all, I think it's, it's really intimidating to speak in front of our council. I think it's the whole fear of public speaking thing that a lot of people have. And honestly, I have seen people quite literally shaking as they stood there at the podium before they talked to us. And the fact that it's not just in front of the council, but, I mean, the camera's on, so in fact, it's in front of the entire community, and it's being recorded. And I've talked to people who are, the fear of public speaking, they're afraid they're going to make a mistake, they're afraid they're going to look foolish. I've spoken to people who don't like conflict, and they know full well that there are people who are going to disagree with them. I've spoken to people who are justifiably concerned that if they express an opinion, that they will ultimately be, be harassed or bullied for that position. And I think those are all legitimate concerns. And over the years that I've, we've been doing this, I've spoken to, I bet a dozen people who are legitimately, they've told me that they will not speak in front of the council for those reasons. And if a dozen people have said it, I bet there's, there are plenty more who would, who would agree with that as well. Second, I think we need to change the, the, the public comment period because it, it's never made sense to me that the council doesn't respond to people. I, I understand the general reason why, but I always thought it would be better, time, time better spent to use it as a conversation rather than as a, somebody coming in and giving a speech to the council. Third, I don't think anybody would disagree that over the past few years, we've seen the public comment period pretty much dominated by the same people, talking about the same issues over and over again. And frankly, and I think we all know this, they aren't talking to us, they're, they're talking to the cameras. They're talking to the, they're, they're using the public comment period as a bullhorn to the, to the Bloomington community. Our last public meetings, or our last couple council meetings have been a perfect example of that, where the list of speakers has been dominated by both sides of the folks on the ranked choice voting. And it's, it's become, again, they're not talking to us, they're trying to talk to, to the entire community of Bloomington. And finally, and similarly, we've seen political candidates from both sides of the aisle use public comment as an opportunity to give a five-minute campaign speech to the community. In just the past couple of years, we've seen city council candidates, a candidate for head of county sheriff, at least two or three congressional candidates, and House and Senate candidates. They've come in front of us, and they've given us a speech, and frankly, that's, that's not what it's there for. So the question then is, so what to do? And again, we've, we've had this discussion, and I'd like to broach it one more time as what might be a possible solution to this. I would like to propose that we move public comment to a time before the council meeting, say to about 6:00 or 6:15 PM. I'd like to move the public comment period to a location other than the council chambers, which is less intimidating and more welcoming and more conducive to a conversation, and that would move public comment period off camera. Public comment was intended as an opportunity to speak to the council. It was never intended to give people five minutes of camera time to the entire community for their impassioned speech, or their histrionics, or their, their, what, what they're, what they're trying to, to campaign on or sell to, to themselves or to the community. And I'd like to amend things so that it's not so much of a speech, but to give a concerned resident the opportunity to come in and have a conversation with the council on an issue. I, I want to be able to respond and to be able to talk to people on things. And I'd like to give speakers the opportunity to comment on things that are on that night's agenda. A lot of times we get caught because if something is not in a public hearing, they, people have concerns about items. But if it's not as part of a public hearing, they've got no voice. And I think we, we can do better than that. And just to make sure that things are a, a part of the official record, I want to propose that at the end, that, or that at that very night's meeting, the same meeting, just a bit later, that we give a brief rundown of who spoke and what their topic was. This, this whole format, it's been used successfully in a number of different cities. Eagan is the best and closest example. They've been using it successfully for years. So it's not like we'd be way out of line here. And I know that some people are going to complain that this goes against our strategic pillar of transparency. And those same people will conveniently forget that that pillar says transparency and engagement. And right now, I think we are, the way we're currently conducting public comment, it not only lacks engagement, I think it actively and, actively and aggressively discourages engagement, because it discourages people to be involved. And I'd, I'd like to see, I'd like to have this discussion soon. Again, tonight might not be the time to do it because it is late at night, and it'd give you some time to chew on it. Happy to talk about it more tonight, or at the next opportunity when we're talking about rules or procedure. But I, I think we can do a better job with our public comment period. We can give people more of a, a comfortable voice, we can engage with them more directly, we can make it more of a, of an opportunity to, for a back and forth and a conversation. And I think we can make it a lot more meaningful and a lot more useful. So just some thoughts. Happy if, if anybody's got any comments on it now, if we wanted to just do a quick kind of review, but otherwise, like I said, we could just as well move it to another evening as well. Dwayne and Jack, were your hands up already, or did you raise them here? Oh, you did raise them. Okay. Councilmember Lomond, Councilmember Baloga, and Councilmember Coulter?
Mayor, I want to thank you. You know, I, I brought this up a couple of meetings back, and, and I think you've really laid out this issue pretty well. I want to encourage us, we don't necessarily have the conversation tonight, it is getting late. I want to be sure that we have this conversation so that folks can hear what we're saying. But I, I think this is a good start to kind of moving this entire discussion, to have a conversation about it. And maybe it makes some sense to have some engagement with this, but I would encourage us to do this prior to the beginning of next year, if we get this moving forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Baloga?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I, I have agreed with a number of items that you mentioned and some disagreement with others, particularly allowing folks to speak on the public comment period on items on that night's agenda. I'd, I'd like to understand more on what the thought process is, because I'm, I'm finding a, a problem to give what appears to be preferential comment time to an agenda item prior to all others having that opportunity to speak. So, you know, just feedback for you.
No, I appreciate that, Councilmember. I was, I, I see what you're saying. I absolutely see what you're saying. But as, as I said, it's, again, it feels uncomfortable at times if, if there is not a public hearing, that people are, are not able to bring things up. And I suppose they could call us earlier or be in contact with the council ahead of time. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's one we could discuss, certainly.
Yeah, and I, I think it's just worthy to hear, you know, feedback. So.
Yep, absolutely.
Because I'd like to hear, you know, feedback from others, too.
Absolutely. Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, just one, one point, and I, I agree, tonight is probably not the time to get into a full-blown discussion on this. But I think, you know, as we, as we talk about what any changes to the public comment period might mean in light of our transferring transparency and engagement strategic pillar, that, you know, we, we are just clear that it, it, excuse me, sorry, you, you mentioned a, a sort of rundown of that evening's public comment period. And I, I guess I just want to make sure that as we're thinking about that, that the, the follow-up that goes beyond that evening continues to be public, that we, that we are, are transparent on, on that follow-up and the, the response to the public comment period as well. And then I would also say, you know, given the, the substance of a lot of the, the rules of procedure discussion that we have in front of us, I, I almost wonder if it might be more effective for this to be a, a separate item of discussion rather than as part of this rules of procedure conversation, so that it, it doesn't sort of cloud the issue, and that we can have some time to sort of focus on, on this specifically.
Councilmember Martin, and then Councilmember Nelson?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, likely.
Patrick, headset. There you go.
One of these nights, one of these nights, I'll get it. Yeah, I, likely another night, but I, I do think this is something we should really dig into. Something I've mentioned before, but it's kind of bugged me, is, is how can folks signal interest in commenting to say a consent agenda item, that maybe they might be able to offer quick perspective on something we hadn't thought of. And whatever our, our kind of final package to consider looks like, I think that would help address that area as well. And just generally speaking, especially as we're going through kind of the rules of procedure here, how do all of them come together to help us reach better decisions and craft better policy? And as public comment is structured right now, I don't, I don't see how that helps us to reach better decisions whatsoever. And as somebody, especially when we were kind of debating the community center way a few months back, pre-COVID, the, the screenshots that would pop up on social media with nasty comments emblazoned across the bottom, I, I got messages as well from folks that said, no, I'm not going to show up because I'm going to have my face across three Facebook groups the next day making fun of me. So I, I appreciate you bringing this forward, and obviously a lot of details to work through, but I think it's a worthwhile conversation.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. And I appreciate you bringing this up, because I, you know, I think there's cases where we've seen where public comment did not work well, but we've also seen it work well. And I appreciate the input of residents, and I want to make sure we continue to have that. People continue to have an opportunity to share their opinions and provide their inputs. So, you know, it, it's a good conversation to have. One of the things that I've seen recently is the opportunity to call in for that and to call into public hearings. And I'm wondering if that is something that we may take and learn from this situation that we're in now and continue on. Frankly, I think that there's a barrier to a lot of people in our community in terms of childcare, or their schedules, things like that, that they may not be able to show up to a meeting, but they may have an opinion, they may have thoughts. And I also would echo, I forget who said it, I apologize, but that the opportunity to provide input into consent agenda items makes absolute sense to me. And it may lead to that item being polled and further discussed or tabled or something of that matter, because somebody brings up a good point. And, and so I, I think the focus needs to be on making sure that we are allowing people to provide input in a way that improves our decisions. And I, I think that's a good conversation to have. So thank you for bringing it up.
Well said. Thank you. Well, I think the, the consensus is to continue this discussion another evening. And I think that you, you might be right, Councilmember Coulter, that we separate this out of the, the rules of procedure and find time to actually have a full discussion on this, which I think makes good sense, and try and craft together what would work best, what would be best to help us make the best decisions on behalf of the community, and what would be most welcoming and engaging for, for members of the community. So a good discussion to have, and we'll, we'll look forward to a time to have that discussion in the near future. So thank you all for the feedback. All right, with that, let us move on to item 2.6, our legislative update. Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. As we speak this evening, that, as we speak this evening, the legislature is actually about to come into session. I believe the House is going to come back in in about 20 minutes. And it seems that they are very close on a bill regarding police reform, that the House is going to debate and consider amendments and then send it over to the Senate. The Senate has indicated they're going to stay in session until midnight tonight, and then they're planning to adjourn, although it's not clear if they mean sign and die, or if they're going to maybe take a couple days or see what happens with the House. It's doubtful that a bonding or tax bill is going to happen tonight. It seems clear there's not enough time for that, and this police reform bill has become the highest priority right now. So we will see what happens yet this evening, but we don't have any clarity on the other issues. If they do adjourn, if they're able to either conclude the police reform bill or defer it, and then they end up adjourning, the likelihood is that they will be back in session on August 12th again, which is the date that the governor's current emergency declaration would expire for its next 30-day period. And the, the legislature would be called back into session if he chooses to extend that. Other issues, we haven't heard anything more from the governor in terms of the consideration of a face coverings mandate in the state. I think he's probably been focused on working with the legislature on these other issues, so we hope to learn more about that this week as well. Happy to take any questions if counsel has any.
Counsel, any questions? Councilmember Martin, your hand is up. Did you just forget to put it down? Or, okay, nope. Okay. Any questions regarding a legislative update? Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not a question, but a clarification, that, that Senator Gazelka did announce today that, he, he didn't give us a hard and fast, he said around midnight. But the plan was that the Senate would adjourn the special session, special session, sign and die after whatever action takes place this evening. So my, my understanding is that at least the Senate will probably not be doing much beyond tonight.
Thank you for that inside perspective. Other questions? Mr. Redlang, thank you for staying up late with us. Appreciate it. Shane, well done. We can then move on to item 2.7, our city council policy and issue update. Mr. Verbrugge, anything?
Mr. Mayor, I, I do not have anything in terms of a policy issue. I do want to remind the council that the, and the community, the Bloomington Noon Rotary is hosting a panel on racial equity next Monday at 5:30 PM. The mayor will be opening that event as a greeting to the community and to the panelists. I will be facilitating that. Chief Potts and Faith Jackson are participating, as will representatives from some of our other partners in the community. Should be a very good discussion. If people are interested in attending, they can do that. It will be at the Hilton on France and 494. We will also be live streaming it on Facebook because of the city participation in the event. We felt it was a good, important community conversation that folks may want to see. So that's next Monday at 5:30. It'll be a live Facebook event on the city's Facebook page.
Thank you. Counsel, anything else to add? Councilmember Coulter? And then Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a, a couple of quick things. Ever since our meeting last Monday, I've been, I've been thinking about Ms. Jackson's racial equity business plan proposal, and, and I support it. I think it's, it's a good, it's important work. My question, I guess, really, I'll, I'll put it to the council, is what, what kind of conversation do we want to have on? what what kind of conversation do we want to have on the resources that are going to be needed to execute that plan? Whether that's staff or budget investments or time or whatever it is? Because it, Ms. Jackson is doing incredible work and and I have nothing but good things to say about her. But that that business plan was was ambitious even under the best of circumstances. And I don't think anyone would disagree that we are not exactly under the best of circumstances right now. And I want to make sure that that what we're doing, that that we are doing things that set us up for success, that that set us up to achieve the goals that we set out, that that we set for ourselves. So that that's the first thing I just want to put that out there to to the rest of the council. And then my my second thing is is more of a question for staff. I'm sure other folks on the council have been getting these emails. I have as well regarding a statement or announcement that the president made some weeks ago regarding possibly ending the, and I'm I'm going to struggle to get this right. It's it's the HUD rule affirmatively furthering fair housing. And I always have to say that very slowly. But I would just like, and this can be written out somewhere, but I would like staff to provide information about what that would mean for us and and what action, if any, we we could or would need to take with regards to our own fair housing policy to address that possible change.
Councilmember Coulter, I don't know, were you looking for an answer tonight regarding the the budget question or?
So I, to my first point, I was more, I'm putting it out there if other folks wanted to comment or or say this is a discussion we should have at a later date. I just want, I wanted to raise the issue more than anything else.
Got it. Thank you. Why don't we move on to councilmember Carter, if we could, please?
Thank you, Mayor. So I think that actually this conversation around racism as a public health crisis is actually very much related to councilmember Coulter's question. So I'm not going to repeat what I said at the beginning of the meeting. I mean, we know what the data shows us in terms of the health and racial inequities that we see among the BIPOC community, both in terms of, you know, the long term systemic and pervasive inequities, and then also the inequities in terms of COVID-19 outcomes. And so, you know, I will also just add that one of the, one of the things that ultimately made me decide to run for city council was the significant inequities across Bloomington. And the data that really got to me was the fact that there is a 10 year difference in life expectancy from those who are living by Kennedy to those who are living by Jefferson, right? And like those kind of inequities are just really unconscionable, honestly. And quite frankly, our BIPOC communities are really tired of us taking an incrementalist approach. And it's time to like really get serious about this work. And I'm super excited because I really think this council is serious. And so I would say that if we were to consider a declaration or a resolution, that it actually really is supportive of the work that we've already been doing. I think it puts in policy the kinds of things that we need to do to support our racial equity work and the work that Ms. Jackson proposed at our last meeting. I think it makes sure that we're collecting and analyzing the data that we should be. It's it's ensuring that we're setting goals with clear metrics and that we are resourcing the work appropriately and adequately. And so I will just end there, but I I would like to hear a response from councilmembers, if you have them. And if this is something that others would be interested in considering and working with staff to think through kind of what the options are. And the other thing that I've been thinking a lot about, so I'm not really interested in doing something that doesn't have teeth and concrete action associated with it. And, you know, in Ms. Jackson's plan, she she did articulate a couple of different things that I think really speak to accountability mechanisms that we could possibly build into policy. And so we could look at those things too.
Council, any feedback there? Councilmember Martin.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess I would echo both councilmembers Carter and Coulter's points in that. I'm really excited that we have kind of this overarching plan that we're going to be moving forward with, especially on the community engagement side. But whether it's through kind of a resolution or a declaration, whether that's something custom to Bloomington or echoes what we see in other surrounding communities, what are those, what are those metrics to really measure what kind of progress we're making? And additionally, I know we're going to be circling back for a conversation about our next round of strategic planning and the equity and inclusion plank that we're going to be working with. I think having those accountability metrics on the front end might help us craft kind of better sub points for that plank moving forward into our next, whether it's two or three years. So, yeah, so I'll I'll echo both the points that have been made. I think that's a useful conversation.
Councilmember Lowman.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to just mention, I couldn't let this weekend go by without acknowledging the passing of John Lewis, an instrumental leader in our country. And all that he's done, along with those other folks who are there as a part of the civil rights movement. Say a prayer for those family members. And one of the things that want to remind the public to do is you have the great opportunity to go into City Hall and cast a absentee ballot. So those those are available. Certainly, check the website for the details on that. We've had, as a council, a lot of discussion around these initiatives, around what we can do for our BIPOC community. One thing I want to try to get an update on is I know that recently we talked about apartment dwellings and the smoking that's taking place there. It's a concrete way in which that we could immediately go after something that's taking place within our community. I want to raise that again as we as we look at different things that we can do to try to directly change those health inequities that our community members are facing. And so I put that back to the council again, that we should move on that. I know it's, you know, we've made some strides with staff, but we could close the gap on that and complete that and make their lives better. Thanks.
Council, anything else to add? I will, I'll add my voice to that conversation of resources toward our our equity plan, our equity business plan, and taking a look at that. And I'm not sure where it's appropriate as we we move forward with it. But I definitely think in terms of, as we look at funding and implementing our strategic priorities, we should, we need to have that discussion. So I would add my voice to that as well.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, if I may, two things I I think I heard a handful of councilmembers saying they're interested in having more of this conversation as it pertains to possibly a resolution similar to what Hennepin County has done. And if if I see a general nodding of heads, we'll we'll come back at a subsequent council meeting here and maybe frame up that conversation a little bit more. And that gives us a little bit of time to do some research in terms of the basis of those other agencies and and the action that they've taken. Regarding the the resources and the budgeting, one thought that occurs to me is that co-chair Steve Peterson will be back in front of the council on August 3rd to provide a monthly report from the Community Budget Advisory Committee on their progress, that it would probably be helpful for the purpose of the committee to hear from the council if there are specific priorities when it comes to budgeting that you would like the committee to consider. They will be in August discussing the recommendation on preliminary levy. So I think it's good to have as much information from the council as possible as they're weighing, you know, that that first recommendation. That's really their first milestone. And then as they start to do their work of putting together some options, I think it would be helpful to know what what the council wants to do, if it's specific to the strategic priorities plan or if it's specific to a couple of of pillars within that plan. I think that would be good feedback for the council or for the committee. So maybe we can return to this discussion next Monday as part of our issues and policy update and maybe have the council maybe coalesce around a couple of thoughts that then we could share with co-chair Peterson when he's here on August 3rd.
Very good. Does that sound good to everybody? Plan of action moving forward? Good. Good, good. Councilmember Carter, is your hand up again or did you forget to put it down?
No, thank you, Mayor. So I I want to just thank everybody for your willingness to have that conversation. And then I also do want to voice support for councilmember Lowman's suggestion. You know, we know that, I think, the last piece of data that we got was 90% of people, people, black Bloomington residents are renters. And I don't know what that means in terms of the percent who are exposed to secondhand smoke or through their apartment buildings, because I know it's not all apartment buildings. But then the, the, the fact that people who are exposed to cigarette smoke and or do have asthma are at much higher risk for getting COVID and having really significant health impacts from COVID. And so I do want to just voice support for councilmember Lowman's suggestion to have that back in front of us. And I'm not, I'm not sure what the timeline was for our tobacco ordinances that we're going to be considering. But I do think that that is, it's an important one to be in front of us as well.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I haven't had an opportunity to look in too much detail on Hennepin County's resolution. But I know that we have talked in the past on equity and everything in terms of our decision making. And I I think that's a good direction to go. I mean, I look at some recent things, our discussion earlier this evening with our fire department and, you know, trying to look at how we might gather data to see the impact of fire service or EMS service to our community based on various communities. You know, I I honestly still struggle with the approval that we had of an apartment complex on the east side there where we approved the market rate. And, you know, maybe in the future there'd be a, an affordable component to it. You know, those types of things, I think that we need to figure out how we integrate this racial equity component into everything that we do. And I appreciate councilmember Coulter and Lowman and and yourself, Mayor. Frankly, all of you for bringing this up and and putting this in the forefront because I think it's extremely important that that it's at least a lens that we look through all of our decisions for, because there are inequities in our community. And and, you know, I think, I think we benefit from recognizing that. I I don't think that's something that we should, you know, be afraid of. We should recognize those and strive to be better and continue to move that forward. And so I appreciate this conversation.
Thank you, councilmember. Council, last call. Anything else? If not, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Martin?
Second.
We got a motion by councilmember Martin and a second by councilmember Carter to adjourn this meeting. Hearing no further discussion. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga? Mayor Bosse?
Hi.
Carter? Coulter?
Hi.
Lowman?
Hi.
Martin?
Hi.
Nelson?
Hi.
Motion passes 7-0. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much. Have a good rest of your week. Thanks much.